Madam Clerk, can you call the roll for us?
Mr. Connolly.
Here.
Ms. Decatur.
Here.
Ms. Egan.
Here.
Ms. Hazard.
Here.
Ms. Healy.
Here.
Mr. Hyrens.
Here.
Madam Chair, you have a quorum.
This evening, we will start in closed session. What we will do is we have a matter we need to take up before. This should not take us long. We will be back hopefully even before seven, but we will be reading into closed session. So we open the meeting and I know, then we leave, but we will be back. So I will turn it over to Mr. Hyrens.
Madam Chair, by motion pursuant to Section 2.23711A of the Code of Virginia, I move that the Stafford County School Board convene a closed meeting to discuss personnel matters to the personnel exemption of Section 2.23711A1 of the Code of Virginia 1950 as amended.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We are in closed session. I'd like to call the June 13th School Board Meeting back into session. Mr. Hyrens, can you read us out of closed session, please?
Madam Chair, by motion, whereas the Stafford County School Board has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to a recorded vote and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and whereas Section 2.23712 of the Code of Virginia 1950 as amended requires certification by the school board that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law, now therefore be resolved that the Stafford County School Board hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from the open meetings requirements by Virginia law were discussed in closed meeting to which this certification applies, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion conveniently closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered.
It's been moved and seconded. Madam Clerk, can you poll the board, please?
Yes, ma'am. Mr. Connolly.
Agreed.
Ms. Decatur.
Agreed.
Ms. Egan.
Agreed.
Ms. Hazard.
Agree.
Ms. Healy.
Agree.
Mr. Hyrens.
Agreed.
Ms. McCosker.
Agree.
Madam Chair, motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. I believe we will have some motions coming out of closed session.
Madam Chair, I have a motion that the school board accepts the superintendent's recommendation for the position of Chief Financial Officer.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Dr. Benson, will you please make our announcement?
Thank you, Madam Chair. It's my pleasure to announce that Mr. Chris Fulmer is the school board's appointment this evening as Chief Information-- Chief, sorry, Chief Financial Officer. Did I tell you I've been up since 3:00? Mr. Fulmer is currently the interim CFO and previously was our Director of Finance and Accounting. His accomplishments include oversight of the FY 2018 budget preparation, which featured zero-based budgeting, serving as a lead on the Munis Enterprise System Implementation Team, and improving internal controls over purchasing and accounts payable. He is a CPA and a certified fraud examiner here and his bachelor's degree in Business Administration, accounting from James Madison University. Congratulations, Mr. Fulmer.
I know, I would have called you out here. I believe we have another motion coming out of closed session. I believe Ms. Decatur.
Madam Chair, I motion to approve the superintendent's recommendation for the Executive Director of Technology.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Dr. Benson, our next announcement.
It's my pleasure this evening to announce that Ms. Nicole Stewart is the school board's appointment to the position of Executive Director of Technology. Since November 2015, she has served as our Information and Database Services Manager in her prior role of Manager in Data Systems and Decision Support Systems for Richmond City Public Schools. Ms. Stewart led and participated in district-wide IT strategic planning. In addition, she has led projects dealing with system and web implementations, a new student information management system, and an award-winning district web redesign using open-source content management systems. Ms. Stewart was also a Computer Systems Testing Engineer with Newport News Public Schools and Assistant Registrar at Christopher Newport University. Ms. Stewart received her Bachelor of Arts Degree in Business Administration from the University of Maryland and a Master's in Information Systems from the University of Phoenix. She has multiple certifications, including Information Technology Infrastructure Library Foundation Certificate, the Business Process Improvement Certificate, and Microsoft Office Specialist Certificate in Access and Excel. Congratulations, Ms. Stewart.
Motion, Mr. Connolly.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the superintendent's recommendation to appoint the principal at Anthony Burns Elementary School.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Dr. Benson, our next announcement.
It's also my pleasure to announce this evening that Ms. Caroline Goddard is the school board's appointment to the principal position at Anthony Burns Elementary School. Unfortunately, Ms. Goddard was not able to be with us this afternoon, this evening because of a conflict. She is currently principal at Ellis Elementary in Prince William County. Ms. Goddard began her administrative career as Assistant Principal at Garrisonville Elementary School. Ms. Goddard was an elementary teacher and a reading specialist at Park Ridge Elementary School prior to her appointment at Garrisonville. Ms. Goddard's strengths include shared decision-making, communication with staff and community, instruction, data collection, teacher mentoring and evaluation, and curriculum design. She's also completed training in cognitive coaching in adaptive schools. She earned her Bachelor of Arts Degree in Elementary Education from Methodist College in Fayetteville, North Carolina. She earned her Master's of Education in Reading from the University of Virginia, and her postmaster's endorsement in education and leadership from Virginia Commonwealth University. Ms. Goddard earned her National Board Certification in Literacy, reading, language arts, early and middle childhood, and we're welcoming her back to our Stafford family.
And for our final motion, Ms. Healy.
Last but not least, I move that we accept the superintendent's recommendation for Assistant Principal at Rock Hill Elementary School.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Dr. Benson?
Madam Chair, once again, my pleasure to announce that Ms. Jessica Corwin is the school board's appointment to the position of Assistant Principal at Rock Hill Elementary School. Ms. Corwin is currently a 4th grade teacher at Conway Elementary School. She began her teaching career in Caroline County before joining the faculty at Conway as a 1st grade teacher in 2011. She's had a variety of leadership responsibilities at Conway Elementary in addition to her internship. She has served as grade-level lead, a lead for Student Leadership Growth Team, and is a member of the superintendent's Teacher Advisory Committee. She's also a teacher recruiter for our division. Ms. Corwin earned her Bachelor's Degree in Sociology and Elementary Education from Randolph-Macon College. She earned her Master's Degree in Education Leadership from American College of Education in Indianapolis, Indiana, and she is a graduate of Colonial Forge High School.
Wow.
Congratulations, Ms. Corwin.
Did she stand up so we could see her? Okay, give us a wave. Oh, there we go, okay. We always like to see. Well, congratulations to all of those who will be joining us in new positions, and congratulations as we start the new year. At this time, we will stand for a moment of silence, and then we will be led in the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Hyrens, if you would lead us, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united god, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. Next, we will move on to the approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion?
Madam Chairman, I move that we approve the agenda with the deletion of Items Number 9.01, Board Member Committee Reports, and 9.02, Board Member Comments, which I would like to defer until the next meeting in the interest of time economy tonight.
Second.
All right. It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Our agenda is approved. We will start off this evening with our awards. I want to thank everybody for coming this evening. I would ask, if possible, I know it is a busy time of year, if after you have received your award, if you could wait till the conclusion of our awards and recognitions, that would be great, just so everybody can hear all the names this evening. I do understand people sometimes do have to get there, but if you could quietly process out so we can keep hearing the names of all our wonderful students and staff. So with that, I am going to start our evening off by recognizing Wendy Martin Johnson, our Executive Director of Student Services, for a presentation of award.
Good evening, Madam Chair, School Board Members, and Dr. Benson. It is my distinct pleasure to recognize Dr. Sue Clark for the recent accomplishment of being the 2017 recipient of the James T. McLemore Award. By receiving this award, she has become Virginia's nominee for the upcoming Case National Award for Activating Special Education Educators. This award initially called the V-Case Award, V-Case is our Council for Administrators of Special Education Excellence Award, was established in 1978 to recognize efforts on behalf of exceptional children. In 1988, it was renamed for James McLemore, the first State Director of Special Education, in recognition of his outstanding service and leadership. To earn this award, the recipient must be a member of V-Case for a minimum of three years, hold a Special Education Administration or Supervisory Position within a Virginia Public School, contributed to V-Case either through elected office or appointed position and activities, and make an impact on the education of exceptional children on the local, state, or regional level. Dr. Clark was recognized in May for her 34 years of professional experience in special education, her six years of service on the V-Case Board, being a Vice Chair of the Stafford Community Policy Management Team, and also as an adjunct faculty member at the University of Mary Washington. There have been numerous accomplishments in those 34 years as her tenure as Executive Director of Student Services, and we noted some of the most recent, including the formation of a bond with our Board to help create two public day school programs, and also the most recent initiation of Project Search, which is a multi-agency project with Mary Washington Healthcare. This will provide job training for high school students with disabilities. We cannot thank you enough for your service to Stafford County Public Schools and to V-Case, and we are pleased to recognize Dr. Sue Clark as the 2017 recipient of the V-Case McLemore Award.
Dr. Clark will be retiring from our division, and so it is a little bit of a bitter sweet that we give her this recognition, and wish her well. Dr. Clark, as I said last night, my comment's in your hammock, wherever it may be. So, thank you so much. Next, I would-- sorry. Next, I would like to recognize Mr. Scott Haran, our Assistant Superintendent of Operations for Presentation of Awards. This is one of our favorite ones.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Rob Adams, who's going to do the presentation.
Good evening, Madam Chairman, Board Members, Superintendent Benson. As many of you know, Stafford County Public Schools has developed and maintained a very strong and active recycling program throughout all levels of the division since 2006. To ensure the program stays relevant, educates our students, and supports sound conservation practices, the division instituted several internal contests to promote recycling. Tonight, we will recognize school individuals in three of those contests, but before I do, I would like to invite representatives from our business partners, GCA Custodial Services, Mr. Dorian Harris, and Mr. Victor Santos, and also with Waste Management Refuge Services, Ms. Lindsay Horn. Both GCA and Waste Management have graciously sponsored the recycling contest with monetary support awards for our winners. I'd like to ask Ms. Donna DeTol from Mountain View High School to come forward. First, the Green Education Award. The Green Education Award is designed to recognize individual teachers, paraprofessionals, or staff members who promotes green education within the school and school division. The Green Education Award for 2016-17 school year is presented to Ms. Donna DeTol from Mountain View High School. Little bit about Ms. DeTol. She's a 28-year teacher who's currently teaching earth science. She was selected for this award because of her superb environmental stewardship and leadership while working with Mountain View High School Envirothon team during the 2016- and 17 school year. Her students captured first place in Envirothon competition, gained exposure to local environmental issues, interacted with local farmers, naturalists, and conservationists, and have gone to earn scholarships and internships. It is with great honor to present the environmental mentor and role model with this award tonight. The recycling video contest is designed to educate students and staff on recycling and focus their creative skills on the issues through the use of video media. This year's theme was Oceans and Rivers, and a winner was selected at each school level. First-place winning team will receive $500. I will announce the elementary school first. First place comes from Thalmouth Elementary School. The title of the video, "Solution Pollution." Could Principal Sally Jo Hennick and Putman and Ms. Hayden Ayers please come forward? Hayden will receive $500. The title of the video, "Protect Our Oceans." Could Principal Boatwright and students Katherine Calucci, Kayla Ingram, Emily Emerson, and Alexandra Haney each will receive $125, and please come forward. This winner comes from Colonial Forge High School. The title of the video, "For the Water," and was produced by Spencer Boucher. Could Principal Daniel and Spencer Boucher please come forward? Spencer will receive $500. We're going to show the video at this time.
Something that is so common in our lives, but has devastating effects on the environment. Around 15% to 40% of the plastic produced ends up in some form of water. There's an estimated 5.3 trillion pieces of plastic in the world's rivers, oceans, and lakes. When the plastics break down, chemicals inside them pollute the water and harm wildlife. Animals can also mistake smaller pieces for food and die from eating them. Some of it gets collected by complex water treatment tanks, but it's expensive, and it barely makes a dent on the pollution. We have created a global epidemic out of something that has only been around since the 1900s. The world has created such a reliance on plastic that it's hard to move away from using them. It would be nearly impossible for you to go completely plastic-free, but there are steps you can do to make a difference. Reduce, reuse, and recycle. It's that easy. When you have the option to not use plastic, then don't use it. If you already have something, figure out how to reuse it for a different purpose. And when you do get rid of it, make sure it gets in the recycle bin. You can also get outside and pick up trash in your area, find a few friends, grab some bags, and get out there and make a change for the better. It's up to you to make a difference. We only have one Earth, and we need to keep it clean for years to come.
Recycling Challenge is designed to promote school recycling by creating a friendly competition between the schools at each level. The division breaks the competitions in two halves, and has winners for each half of the year, and then an overall winner for each level. First half, second half, and overall winners will receive $250. The overall winner for the 2016-17 school year at the elementary school level for the fourth straight year is Kate Waller Barrett Elementary School. On behalf of Principal Austin and her White Tiger Recycling Team, Principal Austin and her Assistant Principal, Daniel Birch, will accept the award. The White Tigers have an awesome recycling program that is second to none in the highest in the division this year. They managed to hold off Rock Hill and Hartwood Elementary School at the end. Their annual recycling rate is 40.5%. The winner at the middle school level for the third straight year is Stafford Middle School. If Mark Smith, Principal at Stafford Middle, could please come forward to accept the award for the Spartans. The Spartans have won the award five out of the last eight years. The program averages an annual recycling percentage rate of 36.46%. And at the high school level, for the fifth year in a row, Mountain View High School. If Principal Stimple could come forward to receive the award for the Wildcats. The Wildcats have won the award five out of the last eight years. It was a close race this year at the high school level between the Wildcats and the Eagles of Colonial Forge, but they pulled it out of the end. Mountain View High School recycled a rate of 40.32%. Congratulations to all of our winners and all of our schools contributing to a very successful school recycling program.
And I would certainly like to thank our sponsors and our community partners for making this possible. Just really, thank you for your dedication to our schools and for our community. So, congratulations to all the winners this evening. Thank you. I'd like to recognize Dr. Andrew Greider, Principal of Rodney Thompson Middle School, for a presentation of awards.
I've asked Mr. Trotter, our focused teacher, to join me at the podium this evening for our awards. Good evening, Madam Chair, School Board Members, and Dr. Benson. I would like to recognize a team of students from Rodney Thompson Middle School. Please come to the front, as I mentioned your name. Isaac Avery, Andrew Medina, and Ashton Waterson recently represented Rodney Thompson Middle School and Stafford County Public Schools at the Sea Perch National Challenge. After devoting over 60 hours to designing, building, testing, and modifying their remotely-operated vehicle, they placed in the top four at the regional competition on April 15th and qualified for a chance to compete at Georgia Tech on May 19th and 20th. The team placed fourth at the competition in the Engineering Notebook category and 11th overall out of 73 teams from across the United States. They were the top finishers from the Fredericksburg region. I'd like to congratulate these students and their teachers, Ms. Courtney Quail and Ms. Lee Hammers. I'm not sure if she's here with us this evening, but I'd like to tell you about her anyway. She's another great student from Rodney Thompson Middle School. Sophia is a 6th grade student who recently represented Rodney Thompson Middle School in Stafford County at the West Point Leadership and Ethics and Diversity Conference in April. She was recognized as a leader among leader for her demonstration of collaboration and leadership while involved in STEM activities. She was invited to take part in the leadership among leaders in the essay contest. Sophia took part in the essay contest and won 2nd place among several entries from middle and high school students. Sophia-- Sophia represented herself terrifically at the conference and beyond by going the extra mile and exemplifying leadership among her peers. For this, she should be commended. Thank you very much.
At this, at this time, I'd like to have Dr. Tammy Hannah, Principal of Drew Middle School, come forward for presentation of award.
Good evening, Madam Chair and School Board members. It is my pleasure to announce the following eighth grade students from Drew who received the National Junior Honor Society Outstanding Achievement Award. Jack Spiniger, McKenna Stein, and Liam Zen. Would the students please come forward with their sponsor, Mr. Utte? The Outstanding Achievement Award is annually given to 500 NJHS students nationwide who have demonstrated excellence in the five pillars of the NJHS, which are scholarship, service, leadership, character, and citizenship. These three students who were the only NJHS students from Stafford County Public Schools to receive this award this year. Each of these students will receive a $500 award, which is placed in a college savings account managed by Oppenheimer Funds as a part of the New Mexico Education Trust Board's 529 College Savings Plan. Drew Middle School is proud of the accomplishments of these three exceptional students. Last year, we had one student to win this award. This year, we have three, and again, they are the only ones in Stafford to receive this national award. So we're very proud. Please join me in congratulating them.
Next, I'd like to have beginning to come forward Ms. Mary Ann Johnson, Coordinator of Mathematics, and Mr. Brock Estes, First in Math, for a presentation of awards.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, and Dr. Benson. I am honored to be here to recognize some of the wonderful achievements Stafford County has made with First in Math this year. We are ranked both nationally and within the state, and Stafford County students have solved over 33.4 million math problems this year through the First in Math program. Brock Estes, our First in Math representative, is here to assist me as we congratulate our schools, our teachers, educators, and families. First in Math is an online program where practice reinforces a range of proficiencies from addition to complex algebra. Setting and achieving the goals as well as friendly competition component keeps the students energized and helps them to sustain accelerated effort over time. Self-paced activities target mastery of procedural skills and fluencies that are essential for internalizing and demonstrating conceptual understanding. First in Math's comprehensive content fully aligns with the standards of learning. And when they saw students solve a predetermined number of math problems, First in Math automatically opens it up to family members as well. Family members can learn and refresh their skills as they work alongside their child toward a higher level of learning of math, and teachers can play against teachers as well. So we would like to recognize some of those in our community. And once again, Wide Water has excelled beyond belief. They are ranked number 14 in the nation. The students solved just over 5.5 million problems with over 15,000 hours logged in for First in Math. We would like to present a certificate to Kristin McKinney Nash acknowledging this wonderful achievement. With a Wide Water student spending so many hours playing the games on First in Math, it is to be expected that they would rank high in many other categories as well, and they have done that. They are also number one in the state. Looking at class team rankings for grades one through five in Virginia, Wide Water has number one or number two, fifth grade having both for the spots in the state for the grade levels. So we would like to present the certificate to Kristin Nash for being number 14 in the nation and number one in the state. Next, we'd like to also recognize some of the teachers, students, and the families from Wide Water. Neil Anand, if you can come on down. He is the number three player in the nation. He is also number two player in Virginia. And on top of all of those achievements, earning the rankings, his family is number one in the nation and holds the number one family member in the state as well. He re- Neil received a National Recognition Award at Wide Water on June 9th. So today, we would like to present an award to him and his family for their collaborative efforts. Yes, they were unable to make it. Next, we would like to present awards to Sadie Yuckheimer and her, their family for ranking number three as top player and the number three family team in Virginia. I know Fernando is here because I spoke to Fernando. Fernando and his family, please, if you could come down. They are right there, and they are ranked number four in both of those categories as well. And last but not least, for the Wide Water, we would like to present an award to Sam Chapman for ranking number five as the top player in Virginia. As you can see, Wide Water is a full-fledged First in Math school. But we have other successes throughout our division as well. We would like to present an award to Caleb Black from the Hartwood School and his family, who are number five family team in Virginia. We would like to present the next certificate to Terry Rivero and the third grade team at Rock Hill. They have the number one team in Virginia in the third grade category. And we also have a token of our appreciation for every third grader for them to have. If you'll take those back to them. And next, we would like to recognize Dixon Smith Middle School. They are the number two school in the state and hold numerous positions in the top 10 middle school teams in Virginia. And we would like to offer a certificate to Lisa Beseglia and for the teams that are there that are working hard within the math department. Each of the teachers for the teams that have those successes are actually getting a signed set of 24 cards, signed by Bob Sun, the founder of 24 and First in Math.
Dwayne, just stay there. Just, 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 just stand right there.
Because right behind Dixon Smith is Shirley Heim.
But just stay there.
Shirley Heim is a number eight school in Virginia, and they also have numerous teams in the top 10 middle school teams in the state. And we would like to offer a certificate to Mary Grace McGraw, along with Jessica Phillips, Rachel Schuster, and Krista Barnes, who are the leaders of the First in Math with the seventh grade teams, and we're providing them with signed decks of 24 cards as well. And now for our educators. Susan Whited was here last year for her successes in First in Math, and this year, she is number 14 teacher ranked in the nation and the number one educator player in the state. She's from Ferry Farm, sorry. Sorry. Well, she was here last year. And then we are pleased also to present a certificate to Catherine Dodd of Dixon Smith Middle School. She is the number two teacher in the state and number 28 in the nation as well. And I would just like to thank all of our students and all of our school community for working and having such wonderful successes with First in Math.
Thank you. I did not want to admit that if I was part of the family team, I might not be being helpful for First in Math. So I will just leave that, that maybe I need to learn. But next, I'd like to recognize Ms. Melanie Daniel, our Supervisor of Gifted and Accelerated Programs, for a presentation of awards.
Good evening, Madam Chair, School Board members. Dr. Benson, I am proud to stand before you and recognize our Six Destination Imagination Global Finals teams for 2017. Stafford County Public Schools is proud to recognize the Six Destination Imagine, or DI, teams for our elementary, middle, and high school students that competed at the DI Global Finals at the University of Tennessee in May. DI is a creative problem-solving competition that is participated in by students ranging from preschool all the way to the collegiate level. At this time, we will recognize our teams. As I call your names, your team names, we would ask that all team members and managers come down front to be recognized. And thank you for holding your applause until the end. The first team we will recognize this evening is the DI team from Ferry Farm Elementary School, The Dungeoneers. This energized... They're energized too. This energized team, a fifth grade thinkers, is managed by Sarah Hall. Team members are Henry Mallon, Jack Crib, and Evan Hall. This was their first year competing together as a DI team. The Dungeoneers worked hard and rewrote their script many times to improve it, and they, and they performed it in front of their entire school for feedback. They advanced from regionals to states and were selected as the wild card team at the state competition, which enabled them to advance to global finals. They are very thankful for the opportunity and support from the school board, the district, and their school community. Congratulations, Dungeoneers. The second team is a collaborative DI team from Mountain View High School and A.G. Wright Middle School named Triple Threat. This team is led by team manager Mrs. Bridget Farrell-Kuzma. Team members are Britton Kelly, Jacqueline Kuzma, and Alexandria Mullen Pratcher. These young ladies have participated in DI for six years. During those six years, they've completed challenges as the Rising Stars, improv, fine arts, and technical areas. At the state tournament this year, this team received a score of 91 out of 100 possible points on their instant challenge. These young ladies are always striving for excellence and improve, and improvement. As seventh, eighth, and ninth graders, they competed this year as a high school team, which definitely brought its own challenges. They bring unique strengths, come together, and form a great team. They wanted me to share how much they appreciate the support of the school board and the experiences that they have gained. Thank you, Triple Threat. Our next team... Our next team is from Rodney Thompson Middle School, and they are the Penny Pals. This team is managed by Julie Stuser and Lynn Lavender. The team members are Kale Perry, Lucy Shutt, Katie Lavender, and Reagan Stuser. They are all sixth graders, and this Penny Pals group has had an amazing journey this year. Their project was selected as a result of the negative atmosphere that they witnessed this fall. So they decided they wanted to make a change in the world, and she's representing them all. They started by creating a movement to encourage good role models and positive behavior. And they were invited to state legislature to share their message that doing good makes sense. While at the state Capitol, they met with the Lieutenant Governor and the Governor, and they were also visited the U.S. Capitol where they took 600 pennies to pass out to senators and congressmen and asked that they take a pledge to be a good role model. The Stafford Press covered this event, and they have passed out thousands of pennies to, to groups including World War II veterans, police, and fire stations, and anyone considered a role model. They even created a website to share their message, DoingGoodMakesGoodSense.com. They took first place at the state competition, 12th at global finals, and they've accomplished great things. They also want to share how much they appreciate the support of the school board in Stafford County. Great job, Penny Pals. And I'm sure they're gonna recognize these role models because I got my penny. I know what's gonna happen for you. Thank you. Thank you, Penny Pals. Next, next, we recognize the collaborative DI team from Dixon Smith and Drew Middle Schools, Roy G. Bibb. They are managed by Tess Lambert and Jody Duffy. And these, the team members are eighth graders Morgan Altizer, Sidney Duffy, Emily Gibbons, Lita Hinkle, Greta Lambert, and Savannah Russett, and sixth grader Sky Duffy. This is the team's first year as a group. They won first place at regionals in both the improv competition and the fine arts categories. They placed third at the state and advanced to global finals in both fine arts and improv. They decided to compete and only won the fine arts at global finals, and they placed 19th out of 86 teams in that category. Their skit was about standing up to bullies and celebrating being yourself all the time. They used 8,794 pop tabs to create their costumes, that's recycling, and over 2,700 lids to create one of their props. They are very grateful to the county for their awesome experience at globals, and congratulations, Roy G. Bibb. Our next team is also a collaborative DI team from Colonial Forge High School and North Stafford High School, The Fantabulistic Four. They're led by David Pearson and Claudia Pearson. The ninth grade team members are Caroline Pearson, Colton Conley, Ethan Zimmerman, and the 10th grade member is Grace Walker. The Fantabulistic Four is comprised of team members with varying years of experience on other DI teams. They were able to advance from the regional competition with a second place award to the state competition, which is a highlight for their team. It was a unifying moment at the state competition that helped catapult them to the global finals. This team enjoyed their experience at global finals, and they placed 24th out of 89 teams in their competition field. This helped them... This helped them individually and collectively, and they are very thankful to the district and the school board for your support. Congratulations, Fantabulistic Four. This last team is a high school team from Colonial Forge High School that was actually selected through a global finals 2017 lottery. So lucky Stafford. The soccer players are managed by Julie Kazmar and Karen Peacock. The members are Michaela Kazmar, Austin Owens, Michaela Savoy, and Emily Stefanhagen. And they're all in the ninth grade. Michaela Kay and Austin have both been on DI teams since fifth grade. This was Michaela S. and Emily's first year, so quite a team. They made it to globals last year, and they truly enjoyed the experience. It was especially impactful for one member, Michaela Kay. Raise your hand. Awesome. Because by working with DI, she actually has the aspiration to work with NASA now, and she wants to be an engineer. DI is an amazing program for all students, and these students say DI is a highlight annually for them during their school year. They are appreciative of the support that the division and the school board provide. Great job, soccer players. Congratulations to all of our teams, and thank you to all of the team members, leaders, and other supporters of this great opportunity, and thank you for supporting them.
Next, I'd like to work on, move on to our recognitions. I'd like to recognize several young women to come forward. Haley White Tomes, Addison Khan, Emma Paz, Jamie Johnson, Kaia Robinson, Cassidy Abram, Taylor Clark, Katie Calucci, and Caroline Calucci. As the ladies come forward, I would also like to invite Mrs. Flett to come forward, please, at this time. And once Mrs. Flett gets up here, ladies, I'm going to let you all take it away with your good girl smarts, smarts. And yes, Mrs. Flett, we're going to make it so you can see everybody. Mrs. Healy will have the tissues.
Good evening, Madam Chair, School Board members, and Dr. Benson. My name is Caroline Calucci, and I'm here tonight with some of my fellow Girl Smart participants to recognize Mrs. Diana Flett, the founder of Girl Smarts for her selection as a 2017 Northern Virginian of the Year. She received this honor because she decided to channel her leadership experience from her successful military career to create a program that focuses on strengthening the confidence of young women and preparing them for the challenges of their teen years and beyond. Another honor that Mrs. Flett received occurred last year. The White House named Mrs. Flett a nominated changemaker and invited her to attend the United States of Women Summit. In case you did not know, Girl Smarts was started here in Stafford County at Margaret Brent Elementary School in 2009. The program has expanded to twenty schools in four counties.
Girl Smarts is a series of workshops designed for fourth and fifth grade girls. The goal of the workshops is to motivate, elevate, and strengthen girls like me as we journey through our early teen, teen, middle school, and high school years. We came tonight to tell you what an impact the Girl Smarts program has made on our lives, and thank you to Ms. Flett for creating this program. Any girl who wants to speak should come to the microphone and just give a little couple, a little sentences on the impact of the program.
Hi, my name is Taylor Clark, and I've been to Girl Smarts 101, 202, and Girl Smarts Summer Camp. Every time has been awesome. Mrs. Flett is amazing. She's taught me and many other girls so many life skills that we can use and remember forever. One of the things she has taught us is the importance of a good handshake. That has been very useful. I bet you didn't know this was your perilucule. But I was meeting with one of my teachers that I was going to have next year for middle, in middle school. I had to shake her hand, and she said, "Wow, you have a good handshake." And I said, "Thanks." That's all Mrs. Flett. Another example of how the things Mrs. Flett has taught us is, that is very useful, is the third eye. I've always been nervous to give speeches in front of my class or speeches like this. But then she taught us the third eye trick, which is where instead of looking directly into the person's eye, you look right between their eyes. So it looks like you're looking them in the eye, but you're not. It totally... It totally makes me less nervous, but it makes me look like I'm one hundred percent confident even if I'm not. Overall, Mrs. Flett has helped me so much. I will always remember her and how amazingly awesome she is. Thank you, Mrs. Flett.
Hi, my name is Kaia Robinson. I have been in Girl Smarts for two years now. Everything I learned in Girl Smarts isn't just to learn about being a young lady. It's about having fun, too. The three things I learned are how to correctly communicate, like having eye contact and having good handshakes, how to control stress, and to do not put makeup on just to make yourself beautiful. All these things can prepare me to become a young lady. Thank you, Mrs. Flett.
I am so excited that this amazing person is getting awarded for this awesome Girl Smarts program. Teaching girls how to survive in middle school, how to stand up for themselves, and how to make the right choices is helping girls all across the county. I myself has went to, has went through this program, and I loved all of the hands-on activities, the fun atmosphere, and that all of my friends did it too. Girl Scouts is, Girl Smarts is truly amazing, and I am pretty certain that you all agree that Ms. Flett is too.
Hi, my name is Addison Khan. I was in Girl Smarts 101 and 202. I learned a lot about myself and my friends. Mrs. Flett taught us that we needed to be true to ourselves. She inspired me to care, to not care what anybody else thinks. Because of Girl Smarts, I'm not really scared to go to middle school anymore. I now see it as a new opportunity to make friend, new friends. When she told us to write in a journal to express our feelings, I actually did that, and I must say, it really helped me. I'm glad that I had gotten to do this experience, and it truly was an inspiration. Thank you.
My name is Haley White. I'm a fifth grad elementary school. I've been in Girl Smarts for the past two years. I love Girl Smarts because it teaches about not to, about growing up and not to be hard on ourselves. That each person is special, and each person brings something different to the table. She also prepared me for middle school. I remember in, in 101, we made little jars of our values in life. And this is the jar. It had ten values that we learned and all of the values were special to us, like friendship, my pick, health, family, and education. Thank you. Mrs. Flett is the special person that I always hold.
Hi, my name is Cassidy Abram, and I have been in Girl Smarts for two years. It has helped me a lot for middle school. Girl Smarts has taught me how to be confident and in control for my future choices. Mrs. Flett has taught me a lot about Girl Smarts, and I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Can I tell a story?
Yes.
Just, just one minute. I know we're late. But one time I went to Girl Starts, and the lesson was about thinking before you say something, and once you say it, you can't take it back. And Mrs. Flett gave each of the group a tube of toothpaste, and she had them squeeze it all out on a paper plate, and then said, "Try to put it back." And you couldn't. So that's a lesson that I learned from Girl Scouts, Girl Smarts. Anyway, it's, thank you, Mrs. Flett. You've done so much good.
It's wonderful that we have a Northern Virginia of distinction, since we always are arguing whether we are Northern Virginia or not. But I just wanted to say it's so great that we started it here in Stafford County. Thank you, Diana, for making it your home, and also thank you for teaching my girls as well at Margaret Brent. So, and we continue on. Do you have, you have more programs? All right. Thank you. We also have some recognitions for, for some of our retirees. I'm going to ask Mr. Conley, since he is our Garrisonville representative, to, to make these recommend, to make those. And if you would like to call them forward, perhaps, it's up to you.
Sure. This is a proclamation to recognize Gail Thiring. Come forward, please. Now we get to embarrass you.
That's right.
A proclamation to recognize Gail Thiring upon her retirement as principal of Hampton Oaks Elementary School. Whereas Ms. Gail Thiring began teaching at Rock Hill Elementary School in 1995, and whereas she became assistant principal at Grafton Village Elementary in 1999, and whereas she served as principal of Falmouth Elementary for thirteen years, and whereas she mentored seven assistant principals, and whereas Ms. Thiring is a former Stafford County Public Schools principal of the year, and whereas she rode a Harley and kissed a pig, among other incentives, for students to meet their reading goals, and whereas she presented at Falmouth Elementary School's forty-fifth anniversary, and whereas she has mentored and recruited many college colleagues throughout her years of service, and whereas she served as the gifted advisory committee during her tenure at Stafford County Public Schools, and whereas Ms. Thiring's motto at Falmouth Elementary was, "FES is a great place to shine." And whereas she continued to grow as a learner and as a leader at Hampton Oaks Elementary School, and whereas she has supported and advocated for students, staff, and colleagues in Stafford County Public Schools, and whereas she will be greatly missed by all, now therefore be proclaimed our esteemed appreciation for Ms. Thiring's years of service to Stafford County Public Schools' learning community, adopted by the Stafford County School Board on the thirteenth day of June, 2017. Thank you, Miss Thiring.
Chris, would you let, oh, oops. They're getting the good photos. Photo opportunity.
Is Ms. Nancy Call, I'd like to call her, from Anthony Burns Elementary? Hi, Mrs. Call. A proclamation to recognize Nancy Call upon her retirement as principal of Anthony Burns Elementary School. Whereas Ms. Call started teaching in Stafford County Public Schools as a math teacher at A.G. Wright Middle in 1991, and whereas she became an assistant principal at Falmouth Elementary School in 1993, and whereas she became principal of Hampton Oaks January of 2002, and whereas she opened a new school, Anthony Burns Elementary, in January of 2006, and whereas she has mentored many new teachers and assistant principals, and whereas her motto is, "Have a great day. The choice is yours. Will be remembered for years to come." And whereas Ms. Call always ends the day, that last day of the year of school with a cartwheel. And this has been confirmed by people I know that have seen this cartwheel. And whereas every year she has the largest bunny hop for the whole school in the bus loop parking lot on Friday before spring break. And whereas she has devoted many hours, days, and years to her profession. And whereas she has been described as having a heart of gold, dedication, and loyalty for students, staff, and our community. And whereas she will be greatly missed by all, now therefore be a proclaimed our esteemed appreciation for Mrs. Call's years of service to Stafford County Public Schools' learning community, adopted by the Stafford County School Board on thirteenth day of June, 2017. And I just wanted to add, my, my children, two have went through Anthony Burns, and two more are in Anthony Burns. And so this is, you know, pretty personal to me. And years ago, and Mrs. Call probably doesn't even remember this, but years ago, my wife and I contacted Anthony Burns and asked if we could sit down with the principal, because at that point, our children were in public, were in private school. And, you know, we were seriously considering sending them to public just because of the good reputation of the school system. And Mrs. Call sat down with us, among her busy, very busy schedule, starting a new school, and spent as much time as we needed, and was wonderful. And that was a very telling sign about the school system and the school. And so I just wanted to say thank you for that. It's been a wonderful experience for our children, and we will miss you.
All right, next, that was always our favorite part, is to recognize all of our staff and all those who impact our kids and all of our great students. Next, we are going to move into our special presentations. If the Special Education Advisory Committee could begin to move forward. At this time, our advisory committees, which are formed in September or start their work, will be giving their year-end report to the Board of Suggestions and other things. And so we do these at the end of the year. We try not to push them too far into the summer so that we can have our representatives here this evening. So I'd like to welcome our Special Education Advisory Committee.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Board of Director, the Board and Superintendent. I'm proud to be here this evening to give the end-of-the-year report for the Special Education Advisory Committee. I landed here in Stafford three years ago on my eighth move with my family, after serving two years in Colorado on the Special Education Committee there. So I was thrilled to find that Stafford did have a committee, and not all states and school districts do. I will say that this, it is a privilege working with such a dedicated group of people on this committee. They truly understand the challenges that families have with, when they have a student with disabilities. And that, that actually starts from preschool through transition and beyond, all very challenging times. As you know, this is one of your committees mandated under the Virginia Department of Education, Special Education Regulations. This committee did meet monthly throughout the year. There were no parent concerns that were brought to our attention this year, but we did have active discussions in regards to the growth of our student population and the significant disability trends across the state. There was a strong interest by the committee members to assess our ability to maintain quality programs with this growth and the related services that are pertinent to the continued support of our students. Redistricting impact on students was also a vital part of this conversation. The committee is extremely excited about the transition opportunity in Project Search. This is a unique business-led, one-year program. It's a school-to-work program that takes place entirely at the workplace. It's currently active in forty-four states and eleven other countries. It provides a combination of classroom instruction, career exploration, and hands-on training through worksite rotations. My son was set to enter this program in Colorado before I moved here at Boulder County Hospitals. And I'm happy to announce that Stafford County is partnering with Mary Washington Hospital. They will provide, the school district will provide a special education teacher and a paraprofessional. The Project Search team will provide job coaches to support eleven Stafford County students that were chosen through a selection process to benefit from this just amazing opportunity. I mean, I do have to say Sue Clark was crucial in helping to solidify this, this partnership. The Parent Resource Center continues to be a vital part of outreach and education of parents while working in conjunction with our committee. While they continue to recognize those who support our students, they're a wonderful source of information for students with developmental problems at all different levels. The top three areas of concern this year were dyslexia, autism, and behavior. They hosted a Pathways to the Future Transition Conference with over three hundred and fifty participants from the Rappahannock Region. The PRC also offered many workshops for families throughout the year, including topics of guardianship, Medicaid waivers, SSI and SSDI, So You Want to Go to Work, the Myers-Drive Respite Program, and the ABLE Act, which is an extremely significant piece of legislation that was passed for families with children and family members with disabilities. The Parent Resource Center also collaborated with the Fine and Performing Arts Committee to plan and perform sensory-friendly performances for families at two of our high schools. This committee also presented a photography exhibition featuring pictures taken of Stafford County students and all venues and art students, who then prepared the pictures and have designed a gallery inside the Department of Student Services. And we invite you to visit that gallery if you haven't already seen it. It's extremely touching to see the pictures. Special Education Advisory Council and the Parent Resource Center really do appreciate the work of SEPTA, which is the Special Education Parent and Teacher Association. They were awarded three grants to the elementary schools here to help support activities and field trips. And they continue to be a huge community, a huge community positive impact in terms of their exchange of information and their outreach to parents. As a committee, we will strive to work closely with all levels of supports to further promote the mission of our committee. From personal experience in many other states, I know the stress and uncertainties that families can face and experience when raising a child with special needs. We can help ease those challenges by bringing together school leaders, educators, support agencies, community members, and the families to build a strong foundation of support. The CAC would like to thank the Madam Chair, the School Board, and Dr. Benson for all of your continued understanding and awareness of the necessities that we do face. of your continued understanding and awareness of the necessities that we do face in special education. We would also like to personally thank Jamie Decatur for being our representative. She's listened to our discussions, she's asked questions and provided updates, and she had perfect attendance, so kudos to you. And finally, we would like to recognize Sue Clark for facilitating CAC for 20 years. Obviously, she, we all know she's retiring, and we're going to miss her a lot on this committee. Her dedication and advocacy has had a huge positive impact on the students, parents, families, and Stafford, and Stafford, and under her leadership, the Virginia Department of Education recognizes Stafford County Public Schools' Department of Student Services as a role model for other Virginia localities, so thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you so much for the work that the committees do. Our next report will be our Gifted Advisory -- oh, there we go. Our Gifted Advisory Committee can start to move their way forward.
Good evening again, Madam Chair, School Board members, Dr. Benson. I'm Melanie Daniel, and I am so pleased to be able to come before you tonight and just tell you how proud I am and how great an honor it's been to work with this committee. I appreciate the support of our School Board Representative, Mr. McOscar, in sharing each meeting, the different things that our committee's worked on, or the different things that have been happening in the world of gifted. It has been an honor working with not only these team members here for this advisory committee, but with the resource teachers for gifted education here in Stafford County. I'm looking forward to continuing to lead groups here towards success. I definitely want to take a moment and recognize our advisory committee and ask them to please stand.
Thank you.
They've met faithfully over the last nine months, and will bring to you some awesome recommendations. I also want to recognize our gifted resource teachers for the county because they have come to meetings, helped support and provide information, and been a major part of some of the students who were down here recognized this evening, so if the gifted resource teachers would please stand. So our presentation tonight will be presented by Vice Chair, Ms. Carrie McShay, and she will definitely take advantage of this opportunity to tell you what this committee has found the time to talk about for nine months, and Ms. McShay?
Good evening. Thank you to the Board for the opportunity to present tonight. As a goal-oriented learning community, this year, the committee asked ourselves, what are our goals? And in response, the committee looked to the Stafford County Public Schools' value of excellence, and also to our new logo, which of course, as you know, is an adult and a child who are reaching for the stars. The committee recognizes that each student will follow a different path to excellence. As we seek to inspire excellence in all learners and to empower teachers and parents to support a child on his or her path to excellence, we realized that we must know the following. First, how far does each child have to travel to achieve excellence and reach the stars? And secondly, how will we know when he or she has reached excellence? In order to answer these questions, we must have concrete ways of measuring our progress. This year, we discussed the importance of this quote, "Organizations that do not measure what they profess to value don't know much about what they value." In support of the vision of a goal-oriented learning community and the Stafford County Public Schools' value of excellence, the following recommendations seek to create opportunities that will inspire excellence in all learners. First, a full-time focused teacher in each school provides an essential foundation for excellence in the following areas: instruction, professional learning, identification of gifted learners, curriculum development, and a strong learning community. To this end, the committee recommends that each school have a full-time focused teacher. There are currently six elementary schools that do not have full-time focused teachers. There is a greater potential for the development of excellence in all Stafford County Public Schools if a full-time focused teacher is in place in each of them. We only need three more focused teachers in order to provide opportunities for excellence in all students, and again, to ensure that all students are reaching the stars. The committee also recommends that the essential skillset of the gifted resource teachers and the work of the gifted resource scope and sequence group should be utilized to the fullest extent possible in the development of a broad curriculum framework. The Extended English Curriculum that has been developed for Grade 8 currently serves as a model for an inclusive curriculum framework. The committee recommends the development and collection of metrics to measure the success and effectiveness of the Extended English 8 curriculum. Data analysis will aid in the successful development and implementation of a broader curriculum framework in coming years. Additionally, planning for professional learning should be based on data and the gathering of information. If we are able to access and interpret the data, then we are more able to plan appropriately. The committee therefore recommends that data analysis tools be fully utilized to support strategic planning of professional learning at both the building and system levels. In order to empower all teachers to inspire excellence in all students, the committee recommends that teacher evaluation standards be revised to include SCPS training courses in gifted education within each licensure recertification cycle. This revision should be incorporated into evaluations within three years with the goal of 100% compliance at the end of that period. We also recommend that these training courses be delivered via multiple platforms, including traditional, blended, and virtual. Further, the committee recommends the creation and dissemination of a resource document that provides an overview of educational services offered by Stafford County Public Schools, including, but not limited to, gifted services, special education services, and services for students who are language learners, and we recommend that this document be sent home with every student in the beginning of year paperwork. In closing, this slide, which is of course also in our report to you, contains a summary And finally, the committee would like to thank the Board and extend its appreciation for your service to the children of Stafford County, and just in closing, we would like to give you these stars as a reminder of our shared desire to put the stars of excellence in our students' hands. Thank you.
Great job. Thank you. At this time, I would like to ask the Career and Technical Education Advisory Committee and those involved in it to come forward for the presentation of their year-end report.
Madam Chair, just if I could have 20 seconds here, just to finish up. I'd like to thank Melanie, Ms. Melanie Daniels, for her years and years of hard work on this, leading this effort across the county on gifted, from DI to all the things, focus, and working this effort over the years. She's moved on to a lateral job within our division, thankfully. She's staying with us, and I'd just like to give her a little round of applause for her hard work for the last five years.
I apologize, we're having technical difficulties. Should be solved in a second, but good evening, Madam Chair, School Board members, and Dr. Benson. Thank you for the opportunity for us to share our CTE end-of-the-year advisory report with you. Thank you very much. Our Chairman, Walter Hahn, will actually make the presentation, so at this time, I will turn it over to Mr. Hahn. Thank you.
Thank you, Donna.
Hi, Walter.
Don't stupid jerk, Walter. No.
You missed me.
How are you?
I apologize. How are you?
Ladies and gentlemen of the Board, Dr. Benson, good evening. It's my pleasure this evening to present to you a review of the Career and Technical Education Advisory Committee's work during this school year and a preview of the work that is ahead of us. It's been a good year for CTE. I'm not going to itemize everything that's happened. There've been many awards, both with teachers and students, but I'm looking forward to even more in the future. I believe what I'm going to tell you, some of which you already know, but I hope to add some additional perspective and detail. First off, let me give you the three themes for this evening. Most importantly, the value of CTE goes way, way beyond just getting a good job. There is great evidence that CTE students have a much more, a much greater capability to graduate from high school, higher graduation rates, greater percentage of entry to college, perhaps even graduation rates from college, but also a much better chance of getting a good job. Second is that, and you know this, I know this, but many people don't, CTE is not VOTEC. As I was growing up, the type of thing now called CTE was often called VOTEC, and it was very different than it is today. I think that's something that we need to address. And lastly, meeting the goal of workplace readiness requires not just the schools, not just the parents, but requires engagement and help by the business community and the community as a whole, and I'll talk more about that as we go through the brief. CTE in the U.S. today, our committee's done some amount of study to understand the current status and trends of CTE. The bullets on the slides are not all-inclusive, but cover many of the important areas. We do understand that CTE programs and almost all programs within the school division are under review right now. We won't be making any specific recommendations on programs, but they will be general and touch on the programs. For this slide, I would focus on the second bullet and the fifth bullet, and I'll summarize. Future workforce needs and the realities of education cost and graduation rates from college, some of which aren't so good, make a great case for focusing on CTE as an alternative to some, to some students who are taking a purely academic path. Now where is CTE headed? I've already talked a good bit about the future. I believe Stafford County Schools is pointed in the right direction, mostly. Please note the two graphics boxes. One at the bottom, talking about the largest need for skilled trades. If you'll look at what those are, those certainly require not only CTE skills, but a combination of CTE and academic skills. And on the right-hand graphic, you'll see an issue there about perception of CTE. I don't have any real answers on how to address that, and I think it's something that we need to talk about in the future. One thing I will note here is that you won't hear me talking specifically about C5W. You won't hear me talking specifically about how everything fits into the strategic plan, but all of this is wrapped around the C5W and the strategic plan. Our committee, through conversations and some personal experience, have a few observations to make about CTE within Stafford County Schools. Again, opinions, observations, but I think we ought to offer them. You have great CTE education programs. You have very good programs to expose students to work environments, but there is some work to be done in providing experience. Exposure and experience are two very different things, and for many of the CTE areas, experience requires real-world experience, using a definition to define the same word, in the business community. It's something I think we need to work on. And lastly, our committee understands funding constraints and how funding constraints impact human resources, but to move to the next level on CTE, and I define that as being able to fully exercise the Career and Technical Student Organization, CTSOs, and work-to-learn opportunities, which requires teacher management, there will be additional human resources required. Now on this slide, I'm showing you all of the suggestions our committee members made for improving CTE. Some of those, we will try to address, some we may hold back on, but I wanted to make sure that you understood what the interest areas for the committee are, and I'll be showing you who's on the committee a bit later on. Committee activities for this year? Our committee's approach to activities has been to develop a draft five-year action plan. Boy, that's pretty aggressive, isn't it? Well, having been on advisory committees, several advisory committees per year for the last three years, what I've seen is that as much as half of the school year goes by before a committee decides what they want to focus on, what they want to do, has a few months left, then has to report at the end of the year. Certainly, the five-year plan won't go untouched through five years, but our ideas are that most of the issues with CTE will cross multiple years, and the plan will be reviewed at the beginning of each year. We're also counting on a good number of the members returning. I plan to return myself, and given the interest of the current members, I think most of the current members will too. One note is the second bullet there, I won't tell you anything about because the chairperson of the Capital Improvements Planning Advisory Committee will provide you a great brief on the high school education spec in, I think, two weeks or so. One additional point is that all of the activities that we've looked at, we've done some planning, we've gathered information on, we haven't taken real action. Later this week, we'll be meeting with Dr. Benson and his staff to explore how we can take that action, the what, when, and how of the committee becoming more actively involved. Committees' future plans. Those fall, those fall out of what I've talked about. In particular, one thing I'd like to talk about is some discussions we've had with a group called Culpeper Career Partners. They're specifically focused on Culpeper schools. Our ideas are not to replicate a program that's in Culpeper schools, but to get ideas that we may be able to transplant into the Stafford County schools. Committee members, myself as chairperson, Judy Bartlett, vice chairperson. We have four teachers on this committee. We have one student, and I'd also like to recognize your staff, Dinah Robinson, and Lisa Mural White. One other point about the committee that I think is very important is that we got an inordinate amount of information and perspective from the one student representative and from the students who came and talked to us for one meeting. I would recommend that the Board encourage all of the advisory committees to have student representation, if possible, and I believe it's not unreasonable to set a target of 25% of the membership to be students, not just in this committee, but in a number of other committees. I've experienced great input from the students, things I would not have thought of, things that staff members would not have thought of. It's just, I consider students indispensable in the advisory committees. And now moving on to the recommendations for the School Board. I'm going to cover these point for point, just because you need some explanation on it. it. First, we would like the board to provide guidance about advisory group advocacy activities. Fortunately, we're going to get most of that, probably, with our meeting with Dr. Benson and staff on, on Thursday, and you'll hear more about that. So that's an action that's already in the works. Second, assess recommendations for application of selected aspects from the Culpeper Career Partners. We're still working on that. We'll come back to you on, in the October 2017 timeframe and say, here are the things we think are really good from that particular program, pieces of ideas, maybe whole ideas, and get your guidance on that. Third is determine appropriate CTSO assistance. Now, this one, we're really going to need staff and teachers to provide suggestions. We, our committee, has heard much of the year, gee, we just can't fully exercise the capability of CTSOs, Career and Technical Student Organizations, because we don't have enough staff and teachers for all the activities. We, the committee, would like to help with our own time, and we would like to recruit people to help. We just don't know how to do that, so we need some guidance. Fourth, assess the recommendations for engaging local businesses. We will come back to you in the December 2017 timeframe with ideas on how local businesses may be able to help. And let me, let me elaborate on that just a little bit. Every successful CTE program or study has emphasized engagement with the local community and businesses, so we feel that's very important. And lastly, budget for adequate CTE teachers and staff. I will not elaborate on that anymore. And in closing, if I could draw your attention to the banner at the bottom of the slide. What's the significance in that? Well, really, it is, try, try again, and you'll succeed. And that's what CTE is all about, is being able to get exposure and experience while you're in the learning environment, because it's a whole lot harder once you get out into the job world. Thank you for taking the time to hear about our committee's plans and work, and I'll take any questions you have.
Any questions? All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are any of the committee members here? If any of the committee members from CTE are here, if you would stand up as well. I know we have a few. Yes, all right.
Thank you.
All right. Next, we are going to our report from the Calendar Committee regarding the 2018-19 school year calendar. I'd like to recognize Mr. Nichols, and then I will let you recognize the rest of your team.
All right. Good evening, Madam Chair, School Board members, and Dr. Benson. Tonight, the Calendar Committee presents the two options for your consideration. Following the School Board Policy 1501, the Calendar Committee is composed of three principals, two support staff, three teachers, six parents, an SEA representative, and five central office staff members. Joining me tonight are two of our parent representatives, Mrs. Anna Killian and Mrs. Dorothy Wood, who will be helping us with our presentation. And I guess I should get the presentation up and running first.
That was the CTE committee.
As you can see here, we've had many representatives. We had parent representatives, teacher representatives, support staff representatives, principal representatives, Stafford Education Association representative, and many division representatives. The Calendar Committee has met five times and has prepared two calendar options for your review. At the first meeting, Dr. Benson asked the committee to consider looking at the calendar through an instructional lens and how it might look differently. There are two requirements that must be met for any school calendar. There must be 180 instructional days and at least 990 hours, instructional hours, in a school calendar. Stafford County students attend school for more than 990 hours, which is then used as bank time for inclement weather. Both calendars meet these requirements and bank approximately six days for inclement As the committee discussed what a calendar might look like emphasizing instruction, a pre-Labor Day calendar was an option to explore. We also felt it was important to survey our stakeholders, parents and staff, to gauge if pre-Labor Day calendar would be considered. As a committee, we had discussions about what questions we needed to ask to provide a level of analysis. Since Spotsylvania recently went through the same process, they kindly shared their survey questions. The committee was provided an opportunity for input before it was released through Google Survey. 7,025 responses were received, and the results are as follows. Three additional weeks of instruction before AP or IB exams, there was 73% selected high or moderate importance. Finished first semester before winter break, 73% responded selected high or moderate importance. Homework study assignment-free winter break, 81% selected high or moderate importance. Ending the school, and school, ending school in May or early June, 76% selected high or moderate importance. Transcips sweaty for juniors and seniors in January, 80% selected high or moderate importance. Aligning the start of school with high school activities, 72% selected high or moderate importance. The committee reviewed these results and developed a pre-Labor Day calendar. Since the majority of the questions had a high percentage of high to moderate level of importance, we also decided to develop a post-Labor Day calendar as another option. And based on the results of the first survey, the committee decided to conduct a second survey.
All right. As you know, there was a lot of discussion about the first survey, so we decided to do a second survey, and we will show you the results tonight. All right. We surveyed the population of parents for which we had emails. Of those emails that went, that went out, we had 34,942 actually delivered. Of that number, we had 5,107 parents and guardians respond. That equals a response rate of just under 15%. Generally, with a large population, a response rate of 15% is significant. In this survey, we simply showed the calendars to the respondents and asked if they preferred choice A, which is a pre-Labor Day start, or B, which is a post-Labor Day start. This method was chosen by the committee for its simplicity and transparency. As you can see, I think you all have the surveys in front of you, we first asked respondents to tell us what, what school levels their child or children attended. We had the greatest response from elementary parents and guardians. We then asked respondents their overall choice of preferred calendars and then broke it down per school level. As you can see, not only was there not a significant difference of opinions overall, there wasn't a significance of opinions across school levels either. Regarding the staff survey, we delivered approximately 4,000 surveys. Out of those emails, we had 1,658 respond. This is a response rate of 41%. Studies show that response rates of internal surveys have a more substantial response due to the personal impact of the questions. So this is a really decent response rate. We were very happy with it. The 41, as you can see, elementary and high school teachers responded at greater rates than any other segment of the population. We had a low response rate for non-teaching positions. Of the staff that responded, there is a very slight difference, a very slight preference for a pre-Labor Day start. Now that we know the survey results, let's move on to the practices of neighboring localities. For the 2017-2018 school year, three of our neighboring counties have a mid-August start. That's King George, Culpeper, and Fauquier. That expands to include Spotsylvania County in the 2018-19 school year. They all start on August 13th in 2018, which is what our proposed start date is in option A. This information impacts Stafford County because of shared programs such as the Alternative School and Governor's School. Both programs would have to figure out what to do if we staggered start dates. Also, many of our teachers live in surrounding counties, so having information on what neighboring counties are doing is significant to them because of childcare responsibilities. And that is our presentation for tonight. Thank you for your consideration. Do you have any questions?
Madam Chair. Usually, there is a recommendation made by the committee. Are you guys willing to stick your neck out and say which one y'all prefer? Sorry. That's a loaded question, huh?
So, we were trying to remain neutral for this presentation. Dorothy and I will both be speaking during the three minutes later about our personal opinions.
Very good.
So we have something planned for that. We had, as far as I know, the majority, we didn't poll. We did not poll, so I'm, I don't want to say that we all leaned one way or another. That's not fair.
Right.
We did not poll the, the members of the committee.
Gotcha, gotcha. Was there any way that the survey could have been done, broken down by grade level? So maybe one survey went to the high school group, one survey went to a middle school group, and one survey could go to elementary school. Was that, was that looked at at all?
It wasn't because of the time constraints that we had.
Okay.
We did the survey, what, two weeks ago? Two weeks ago. We sent it out on a Thursday, right after our meeting. We had made significant changes to the calendar. It was right up until we sent out the survey result, the survey. We sent it out on Thursday, and responses were due by Tuesday because we were meeting that Thursday, so there wasn't much time to do that.
Okay. I'd be interested to see, you know, grade level specific.
So, I mean, in your survey results, you will see that it's broken down by school level, but we don't have, so we asked them what grade, what school levels their children attended, and then based on that, they were asked what calendar they preferred, and that's in your survey results.
And you said there wasn't a whole lot, the biggest majority came from the elementary school level, is that right?
It wasn't a huge majority. It was, let's see. It was a 37% for elementary school versus 32% for high school.
Okay, gotcha. Okay. And remind me again when the survey was sent out?
The survey was sent out, not, I don't know what the date is. The, when was the date?
It was like the June 1st and 2nd.
Two weeks ago.
All right. So, it's safe to say there was prom and stuff going, there was a lot of stuff going on?
There was.
Okay.
And to be fair, we only had the email addresses that we had, so if email addresses were not provided to the school, then we weren't able to send out surveys.
Gotcha, gotcha. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. All right. Thank you for your time.
Madam Chairman, I got a robo-call, which wasn't related to my email. Do, do we have any information on that about the calls that went out telling people about the surveys?
Yes, we sent a robo-call out prior to the survey. Ms. Johnson sent that out, notifying our families that a survey would be following on the 1st and 2nd of June.
And did that go to people that didn't have emails, or just people that had emails on file? I mean, they, they mentioned that was a potential restriction.
She said we had a larger number of people with phone numbers on file than we do email. Two weeks prior to the survey, we put out a robo-call earlier encouraging our parents and families to update any contact information regarding their primary email accounts and things of that nature, so that we, as we would be conducting a survey. And that did result in a increase and correction of emails and things that came out, which allowed us to put out almost 35,000 emails.
Okay. Maybe that's the call. I just remember, I was impressed that I got a call about the survey, because I, of course, was one of the ones that was concerned about the timing and, and really getting this out there. So I think it's really good that we got that call out there to let people know there was a survey coming and that it was important that we hear, you know, back from, from them as to their feelings on that survey. So, thank you for doing that call.
Mr. Nichols, Madam, I'm sorry. Did I cut you off? Go ahead, no, no, no. No, no, no.
I'm going to recognize you as who I was going to recognize. Go ahead, Mr. Collins.
So, the survey was conducted, I talked to some folks on the board, just want to make sure I understand. The survey was not per household, correct? It was per parent individual, so if you were a staff member and you had a child in the system, you were voting twice?
The way the survey was conducted, we sent out two surveys. We did a survey to our parents and family, and then we did a separate survey to our employees. I'm an employee of Stafford County Public School. I also am a parent of children in Stafford County Public School. So in my role as a parent, yes, I did receive an email, and if my wife also had her email as a primary on there, you could have two, she could also receive an email.
Because as I looked through the results, the highest percentage of any demographic to support a pre-Labor Day start is administration, and they voted twice, conceivably. So, I just wanted to confirm that because, I'm not saying this wrong. I'm not saying this wrong at all. I mean, I understand, they're a parent as well as they're an employee, but that does kind of tilt the numbers a bit, because if they were only allowed to vote per household, that would expand the margin in that poll. I just want to point that.
When you look at that, though, sir, if you look at that, you have data that was broken up separately. We did not mix the data.
No, no, I know.
We kept it separate, and so as a parent, I voted as a parent.
Sure. And y'all did a very nice job with it. I mean, that's, that's what I mean, it's very well broken down. But I did want to point, though, that, I mean, I, I don't think someone would, I mean, again, maybe they would, but I mean, if, if I had a position on something, it would not change whether I was a parent or whether I was an employee, or it shouldn't, because I'm making a position based on what I think is best. So I just want to point out that that would expand the margins in this polling, if it was per household. I'll go back.
Yeah. Mr. Harris.
My question is about the committee's work and data collected. I, I don't feel like there was a lot of data collected by the committee on these various options, or at least it hasn't been presented to us. So, survey's great, but essentially, what was sent to parents, what was sent to staff was this calendar or that calendar, without a lot of data to back up any of the claims that folks make about either one of the calendars. You know, the AP exams is a big one, AP, IB, IB exams. But where's the data that says, yes, more time to prepare for those do improve scores? You know, that was one of the options, you know, one of the reason, reasonings in the first survey, but there wasn't any, again, any, any opportunity for anybody to go and find that unless they went and found it on their own. I would have expected some sort of information behind it that parents could go and look and see, and this is why this calendar might be better with some actual data. This is from my predecessor. When the county went through this process, and Ms. Healy can probably speak to this even more, even better, I think it was the, in 2010 when they did this, looking at the 12-13 calendar? Does that sound rough? Correct timeframe?
We've gone through several cycles of this matter.
The last one.
But yeah, I remember them all, just like the redistricting.
So, so this, this one folder was just one of those many times. It has a lot of information in it. I got a lot more information out of this folder than I have over the last several weeks in what my expectation was of the output of the Calendar Committee. I expected, we are recommending this calendar because of these reasons, and just a, a point on that of, yes, there is community support out there at these levels, that being the survey. But what, what seems, what, what has been brought to us is, here's a survey that we did. Any one of us could have sat down and typed up a survey and, and sent that out and got that data back. It's fantastic, but it's not really useful in trying to make a decision here on a calendar, on a calendar that we need to make a decision on in a very fairly short timeframe. I think it'd be most useful to have that 18-19 calendar ready to be published and, and parents be able to know about it at the beginning of this upcoming school year. So that gives us, as a board, you know, six weeks maybe, to try and find out more information, more data, and make a decision on a calendar, which is going to be a fairly significant change to Stafford County Public Schools. One of the other data, one of the other things that we hear about are bus- One of the other data, one of the other things that we hear about are buses and the heat and starting earlier, and buses with air conditioning, without air conditioning, doesn't matter. I don't know that right now. I would have expected that, some of that information to be coming to us from our committee work. So, you know, at some point, we're gonna have to make a decision about where we go forward on this calendar, and we do not have, in my opinion, I don't, I should speak for myself, I don't have enough information to make a decision at this point.
Good point. When we started this looking at data, there is no empirical data, which is pure, for pre- or post-day starts. The data you'll find is on instructional time and how you use instructional time. We talked a lot about the benefits of AP. Majority of our state, if you go on the VDOE website and pull up the 1516 calendars or calendar based on things, you'll see that Stafford County, Spotsylvania, and Fredericksburg are surrounded by schools that start on a pre-Labor Day start. And the 1819 school year, it will be Fredericksburg and, depending, could be Fredericksburg and Stafford, that would not be on a pre-Labor Day start. So, there is some information that we could gather from these schools, these other counties that are doing this. You have several that are starting, as you saw in the presentation, early August. We deal with the heat, just as we know today, when we were out at the Dare Day and things of that nature, that we have heat in June. We also have it in August. But we will take your direction, if that's what you like.
I hear that, and that's what would have been nice, to have that information consolidated for us and brought to us as backup reasoning of why a particular calendar is coming forward.
Madam Chair, can I jump in real quick?
Sure. I was gonna, Ms. Decatur first. Just real quick, I wanted to, I don't have a question, if that's okay. I wanted to take the opportunity to thank the calendar committee, because that hasn't directly been said yet, but I definitely appreciate the work that you guys did. At our last meeting, you guys came and presented information from a survey that you sent out. You know that we received some feedback, so I just want to say that when you guys did your work initially, you didn't receive the emails, we did, and we told you about the emails, and you guys responded by sending out another survey. And so, for that, I appreciate you, and I, you know, maybe there is still some work to be done and some information to be figured out, but that's a part of what the committee does, and so, thank you for doing that and for the hours that have gone into working towards figuring out what's gonna happen with our calendar. Thank you very much.
Yeah, heard that.
Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you. That was good.
And I didn't mean, I don't mean to disparage any of the work that you guys did. Thank you guys for volunteering, everybody who was on the calendar committee.
Madam Chair, I ask one more question.
Let me go to Mr. Conley first, and then...
Bring up two things. So, you say the surrounding communities have a pre-Labor Day start. That's true, but there's a big difference between August 13th and August 28th. I mean, there's a huge difference. So, we're looking at Prince William County is August 28th, Fredericksburg, September. Spotsy is mid-August, I believe, but they flipped. They keep flipping. There's not a continuity here, and a lot of folks will tell you it's because of the lack of a process there, which I know I stated in the last meeting, is, I think, that's a stream we're rowing down if we don't pump the brakes a little bit on this. So, I just want to point that out. And two, yeah, it was warm today, but it wasn't August hot. I mean, August hot's 97 degrees constantly, consistently. And as we pointed out last time, bus drivers were not on this committee, but yet, when you look at the survey results, among the staff, which by 5148 supported a pre-transportation staff, was almost 80% against, and they were not on the committee. So, they're, I'm concerned their voice is not being heard at all. I don't like the idea of kids getting on these hot buses. These bus drivers are on these buses all day. It's not like they're getting on and getting off, they're there all day. So, I, you know, I just, again, I mean, we could talk about this all night, and I know we have a huge agenda ahead of us, but I, you know, I'm just gonna echo what I said last time, which is, I would suggest the board move to instruct staff to go with a post-Labor Day for 201819 and work on a comprehensive plan to move forward, if the administration feels it's important, a pre-Labor Day for the 2020 calendar, and educate the public on why it's important. You know, we really haven't even dived down into the merits, per se, and, but if it's important, let's educate the public that it's important, because right now, they're telling us that they don't want it. So, I yield back.
And we did do some data, and actually, Mrs. Wood would like to share a little bit with you.
I did a little temperature analysis. Went to weather.com, looked at the average high temperature for June, July, and August over the last five years. In 2016, well, actually, let me back up. Over the last five years, July has been hotter than August, except for 2016, where they were the same, which was 89 degrees, a high of 89 degrees. For two of the years, 2014 and 2013, June was actually hotter than August. It was 83 degrees compared to 82 degrees. And just as a little insight, my husband grew up in Alabama, and they have hotter temperatures for much longer than we do up here. So, I asked him, I said, "Harry, you know, did you have air conditioners on your buses?" And this was back in the day when they weren't allowed to wear shorts. It was jeans, pants, that's all you could wear. He said, "Yeah, we had air conditioners. There were 40 of them, and we put them up, and we put them down." Just a little insight.
Can I, I just want, I agree, but I wouldn't suggest that we go back to however many years ago back in Alabama. We don't need to run schools like that. And secondly, you know, we can look at average temperatures in months, but let's be honest here, the average temperatures are including 2:00 in the morning, 11:30 at night. I mean, the average temperature in the time that these children are in buses is not 84 degrees in August. It's just not.
This is the average high temperature. Average high temperature.
But, do we really want, I mean, 83, 84 degrees? Okay. All right, we'll accept your data, but...
Madam Chair.
I've lived here a long time.
Let me go to Ms. Egan first. She jumped first.
Oh, sure. I just haven't, I haven't said anything yet.
Oh, okay. Sorry, I'm trying to keep everybody...
No, keep everyone on, mark, so thanks, thanks for the, thanks for the committee's work, and I know everyone's passionate about this issue. I'm, I'm right now not on one side or the other, however, I'm leaning towards one side by reading all the input that's given to me from constituents, teachers, and neighbors. So, you know, so there's a lot of things coming in, like, you know, August 13th is not just about temperature, it's about the extreme high humidity in the schools. There's a YouTube video, I'm sure, based on Mr. Hirons' packet there in 2010, when the energy person from Stafford County came up here and said it was gonna be about $500,000 to cool the schools in August. And that's from a board meeting, and gave some costs about that. So, that was in 2010, so I don't think it would go down, maybe it was wrong information back then, but it had to do with trading degree days, and degree day trading in energy is, I'm trading a June day for an August day. But humidity plays a factor, and also, what plays a factor is the year round, the humidity and temperature coupled with a year-round air conditioning system in order to keep that school at a tolerable level. So, those are some of the things that I found in my research. Virginia has one of the, you know, later cutoff kindergarten birthdays nationally. So, there's a couple of random states that do have some later dates, but does having four-year-olds in kindergarten a little bit earlier really matter? Well, yeah, ask a kindergarten teacher. They'll tell you, it matters. CGS, I've had kids in CGS program, the Commonwealth Common School, and I'm so happy that everyone's mentioning it. It's amazing, it's great news. I've had no problem, and the kids have had no problem in their testing scores, going back and forth with the early start date with Spotsy and the other counties for CGS. So, I don't really think that's a big, a big thing. And there's absolutely no test data out there anywhere I could find about IB, AP. As a matter of fact, some of the post, the schools with the post-Labor Day start have better AP and IB scores. That's what I've found. The post-Labor Day calendar has a 90 days, and a 90-day and a 90-day calendar, but the pre-Labor Day calendar is something like a 73 and, a 90, or a 73 and a 90, or, so, I have the, I have the data here, I can look it up, but it's, there's, one is less than the other. Couple of days, nine days less?
87, 93.
87, 93. Okay, so, and according to teachers, that doesn't make a difference unless you're in a four-by-four, and then that makes a huge difference with the amount of classes that you actually miss with those couple of days. There's also some unintended consequences in sports. We've had a team just recently, King George High School Girl Softball Team, for instance, made it to the state championship. However, the tournament fell after graduation, and four of the girls couldn't participate.
Mr. McOssker, that is actually abso...
Okay, that, okay, thank you.
That is absolutely incorrect. So, I checked that with VHSL.
Okay, great. Thank you very much, Madam Chair. That's a good, good fact check.
Because our baseball team a year ago graduated and then went to the state championship.
Good, okay.
They would have been graduates.
Okay. Losing three weeks during the summertime would also be morale, hurting the morale of some teachers that have summertime jobs. They have an economic impact on them. Many teachers work other jobs over the summer, and they count on those jobs. Bus drivers were not consulted during this survey, unless they were, Madam Chair. Were they, were bus drivers consulted during the survey? Yes?
They talked with their SEA, yes.
They talked with the SEA members?
Through the SEA.
Through the SEA reps?
They were not part of the committee, but again, we followed the 1501 policy.
Okay. And then, so that was brought up about the temperatures on the bus in August. So, yeah, 87 and 93. So, we have, if we start a pre-Labor Day, it's uneven instructional days at 87, 93, as you mentioned, right? One semester is six days shorter, which critically affects four-by-four classes. Pre-Labor Day start dates include, are all different in surrounding counties, as mentioned by one of our board members, some on the 28th, and some are later in August, and some are mid-August. Not matching spring breaks of surrounding counties was a goal. Will we require an annual waiver from VDO in order to start early? Is a question from one of my constituents. I don't know the answer to that, and that kind of speaks to, maybe you do, but that speaks to some of Mr. Hirons' concerns about some of the data that didn't come, at least it didn't come to us, you guys probably know it, but it didn't, it didn't seem after this individual looked at it, we qualified for any of those reasons, for those waivers, to allow us to start early. I'm not sure about that as well, but...
I'm not sure who the individual is, Mr. McOssker.
Committee member, Dana Brown.
So, what our understanding from DOE is, in terms of missed days, that five of any of the 10, of the last 10 years, as long as you average at least eight days out, I think our average is 11.
And I think, I think the concern was that we had misreported, or we hadn't been reporting accurately and for a few years on our snow days, as evidenced by that snow day fiasco that we had by starting early and not reporting correctly. And so, that was my concern, that they wouldn't accept that our snow days were actually correct. Could be totally false, but it's a, once again, it's a, it is a constituent issue. We've already talked about the committee makeup.
Which is by policy.
Yeah, it is, it is by policy, but I think I brought out, I brought out the point last time where it was, what do we, 14 staff members and five parents?
Well, I'm just saying it's the policy of our board.
Well, maybe we, yeah, maybe we need to relook policy. Yeah, sure, it's on us. I get it, I get it, but, so, this can go on, I'm not gonna, please don't go on. Yeah, so, there are some issues, and, you know, I'm not ready to support a pre-day, or a pre-calendar.
Okay. Ms. Egan.
How important is it for us to have a calendar established pretty quickly? Do we have things that are contingent upon us making a decision?
Do you have summer plans? Do you make, do you have summer plans?
Well, yeah, I do, but I didn't, I'm asking him to make it public. I'd like to hear something more than just vacations. Are there curriculum planning? Are there other things that are contingent upon us making a decision on the calendar?
Once the calendar is approved, and if you would approve the pre-Labor Day calendar, there would be things that we would have to do. We'd have to look at staff and get with HR. We'd have to look at our calendar, making sure our parents and community are well aware so they can make plans a year out.
So, we, so we need to make a decision. We can't just keep this hanging, correct?
Yeah.
Okay, so I guess my question to the board is, it seems like everybody's in agreeance with whether you should, we should start before or after. Why don't we, why aren't we just voting on it? Up or down, and so that everybody can get back to work and get on with...
Let's go, mister.
Planning.
Let's do it. Go ahead.
I would at least like to make some comments. We, we do not have this on because of this committee, this board said they did not want this on for information. We spent 45 minutes to 50 minutes on a topic that we didn't even have on, basically, really on the, well, we did have on the agenda. So, this was the preference of the board, was to bring it with a committee coming and presenting.
Right.
So, we still would have to put it on for information and for...
Madam Chair, I asked specifically during that meeting, when we did that, if we were still gonna be in a posture, we could make a motion, and the response was, absolutely, we're a board, we can make a motion at any point.
Correct.
That's correct, with, between our rules and Robert's rules of order.
What's, what's the alternative?
To just kick it down the road.
Kick it down the road.
They need, we need, they need a calendar.
Can somebody, I don't know how this works.
Let me, let me make my comments before one is made. Since it appears that this board is not willing to look, to entertain a pre-Labor Day, I do not like the post-Labor Day calendar. I don't like the one that's presented. So, I mean, nothing against the calendar committee, but that's not, we also did several surveys and have some information and data of some preferences. I'm not ready, I mean, I will be voting against, because I don't think tonight we have a calendar that this board has owned yet, but I will certainly defer to the board members, I don't think that this post-Labor Day calendar, we did some survey data, and I don't think then we incorporated that into the post-Labor Day, but, that doesn't mean, yes, and so, wait, let me finish. So, I'm just saying, if, and that's fine, if this board wants to say, we want A or B tonight and just vote it, that's fine. I'm just saying upfront, from my perspective, this board hasn't done the hard work to look at these calendars, because just like as I did and said in redistricting, as much as we get a committee, that's great, but at the end of the day, the decision rests with this board. This board may be ready to go forward, and that's fine, but I will just say, I am not comfortable, and if, you know, there is not a pre-Labor Day, you know, consensus, I, you know, I understand, but I am not, I will not be voting in favor of the post-Labor Day calendar, because I don't think it's the best we can do.
Madam Chair, I have a point of privilege, if you will. So, there's two options. There's an option to, after everyone has made their comments, there is an option to move calendar, move calendar B, post-Labor Day, to action tonight, and then, of course, vote on it for action, or to move calendar B, option B, post-Labor Day, to next week for information slash action. Maybe we'll just move it for information, knowing that we're gonna act on it. It'll give another week to the committee, to the constituents, to cite Mrs. Hazard's concerns, to vote on it. And that would be the meeting of the 20, if we wanted to do that, that would be the meeting of the, what, 27th? 20, not the special call meeting, but the meeting to the 27th.
27th.
Yeah, our next regular meeting, which would be the 27th, so that would be, actually be a couple of weeks.
Be two weeks.
Two weeks.
No, if the, if the view of this board, I was just giving what my opinion was on it, so, I mean, it appears there may be a different...
I think in general terms, what we're talking about here is a post-Labor Day or pre-Labor Day, and... a pre-Labor Day, and, you know, I'm of the opinion, we're not, I don't object to continuing examining, but I don't think for this calendar that we're talking about, the eighteen-nineteen calendar, we are prepared, we have enough information to go forward with a, with a pre-Labor Day option. Our post-Labor Day is our traditional calendar, the one that was presented, you know, I haven't looked in great detail, you know, I want to make sure the little things are, are taken care of, that we always bump into the Veterans Day, the, the length of, of Christmas break, those types of things, the little things that we can make adjustments to, that we typically make adjustments to, so, that's where I would see it smart, is put on for information and twen, and on the twenty-seventh meeting, a direction forward on a post-Labor Day, option B, post-Labor Day calendar.
Madam Chair?
Right.
The reason that I, that I brought that up and said it the way that I did, because we were sitting, we were all sitting up here doing the doggy paddle, and nobody was making a decision on anything, this is going to be a kick down the road, kick down the road, kick down the road, and nothing was being done, do we tell the committee, take it back? Do we, do we create a work session and sit down and tackle it, roll up our sleeves? So, those were things that I was, I was eventually going to get to with what I was trying to say, we got, we have to do something.
My comment would, was going to follow on to those comments, was, the board then needs a work session, if we're going to pull it up and we're going to work it, this is our decision. I do not feel like I should say to this committee, who has put in this time and has presented to us their findings, hi, now I need you to go out and rewrite this calendar. If those committee members have specific comments and stuff to me, I know my board, my appointee to the committee will certainly let me know what her thoughts are, but I, but like I said, if there isn't, if there really is a move to move forward, I am open to hear a motion, I just wanted to state what my view was. I do think then the board, if we are not going to vote it tonight, needs to do a work session, at least to have some comment on, on the calendar.
I agree.
Because if we're going to shift around days and all this stuff, we got a lot of work to do.
But that's our normal practice, that's what we've done every year that I've been on the board, we have not had a work session on the calendar, if we just have the calendar of our traditional calendar, we get it and information, re-review it, we, we hear from the public from time to time, and, and we hear, make the decision, I don't, I don't think that, you know, adjusting our traditional calendar is going to need a work session.
I don't know, my constituents, everybody that I've heard from, wants a pre-Labor Day start, that's why-
Wait, wait, no, no, that, that's something different, if this, if this board wants to, you know, take the time over the next several weeks, very short weeks, of having a work session and debating pre-Labor Day, post-Labor Day, that's a different story than what, what we've been talking about here of-
Yes.
-just directing staff via motion to put option B, post-Labor Day, traditional calendar, onto information for July twenty-seventh. Now, I, June, June twenty, I'm a June twenty. Now, what I, I would favor in part of that motion is also direct staff to return the, to the committee, develop a calendar for nineteen-twenty, twenty-nineteen, twenty-twenty, which they may bring forward a, a pre-Labor Day, which, out of that work, I would expect some of the concerns that we've heard here tonight to be addressed by that committee, and more information, more data being brought forward behind the counter-proposition.
Madam Chair? Yes, Ms. Decatur, I'm sorry.
I just wanted to add, this microphone, I don't want to take it out of their hands, they've done a fabulous job as a committee, but it, like you stated, it's a, it's a big, what's that?
No, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Okay. It's, it's a big change, I think we're all here and we're not ready to make that change yet with the information we have, but that doesn't mean I want to yank it from them and say, you didn't do good enough, we're going to do it now, it's, they're a committee and they're doing a great job, and I, I think that some of us just want a little bit more information, and we can have a working, mutual relationship and ask them for a little bit more information. I also just wanted to add that I don't know how to make this motion, but can we just get something done, can somebody make a motion to-
Right, Madam Chair, can I?
May I?
Sure, I can make it, are you?
Okay, I started this off with my question and my comment about the calls, and I, I want to say that I think the committee has done a commendable job, particularly over the past two weeks. I can't imagine having come up with, with the data that you came up with over two weeks, I mean, I didn't think it could happen, and you did it, so, thank you, and I, I think that what the data shows is that we have an interest across, across the board, from, from our stakeholders, from our staff, from everyone, and, you know, I have to say, as, you know, Mr. Hyren pointed out, I was here not only in the, the last time this controversy came up, and I think it was four to three, on a pre versus post-Labor Day start, but it's, it's been up several times during my tenure on the board, and I have supported the post-Labor Day starts, but that's not to say that I would not support or consider a pre-Labor Day start if I had compelling information that, you know, showed me why it should be done. I don't, I don't put this on the committee, because that was not what the committee was charged with, but I would like, in the future, you know, when the committees go forth, is to, to come up with the data, if, if it's there, or, you know, whatever there is, to support this pre-Labor Day, because there is clearly, you know, almost half of the stakeholders, you know, want pre and, and half want post, I'm, I'm averaging these out, but, you know, fifty-one versus, you know, forty-eight, forty-nine, that's pretty much close to me. But at this point, Madam Chairman, I have to say that I'm not going to support a change in what we've done in, in the tradition with the support of the public, because it's so close, and because I really haven't heard anything, you know, academically compelling as to, you know, what this would benefit us.
So, Madam Chair, I'll make a motion.
Spotsylvania did the same thing, Spotsylvania switched, they started the middle of August, they said, oh, this is going to help us on our test scores, we're going to do so much better, and that's why we're doing it, and gosh, I don't think they did better, we did better than them the next year, and then they switched back to post-Labor Day, and now they're going back to pre-Labor Day, so I don't want to be flip-flopping like that, but I will, you know, I will keep an open mind, and I will consider a post-Labor Day, if, if, if the data's there to support it, so, but, but this year, I really can't, it's just too close, it's too late, we normally would have made this decision, and, and we really do it for, for the parents, you know, as, as well as the staff, because in the, in the past, the reason we go two years ahead is because we know families make plans, and they, they need to start making those plans for next summer's vacation, you know, right about now, you know, not this summer, but, but the next summer, so, Madam Chairman, I would support the, the move to, to bringing this forward, I am not ready to vote on a calendar tonight, but only because I think we've only focused on the issue of pre versus post, but I would be, you know, willing to support a motion to bring forward a post-Labor Day calendar for this one year only, and then having the committee go forward, and I would like to see the committee be charged with a two-year calendar, you know, for the next round, as we have in the past, have this one be, be for one year, but I don't think work sessions are really going to do it either, there's, unless somebody's on the fence, you know, if there's, if there's four people that want post-Labor Day, or four people that want pre-Labor Day, you know, let's just do that and then consider the calendar, because I do think that the, you know, the, the community and, and the staff, you know, need to have input on that calendar as well. I mean, we've got two perfectly good calendars here, one pre, one post, but, you know, they, they need to be considered before, we need to get input before we vote, and that's what I'd like to, like to hear on, I'd like to see if this board is willing to take one or the other-
Thank you.
And then move forward.
I thank you, Madam Chair, I have a motion.
Okay.
I think, thank you, Ms. Healy. So, Madam Chair, I have a motion, I move that this board consider this, the, the information meeting for, and bring Calendar B, post-Labor Day, to our twenty-seven June meeting for action. We temper that with a, requesting a two-year plan for twenty-twenty-one, twenty-one, twenty-two.
Wait, let's, let's make it a pure motion on what we're doing with this calendar.
Okay, so forget the tempering, and so-
I mean, just, I mean, our motion is either we're bringing a calendar, or we're not, just, you would like to bring option B only-
Only, post-Labor Day.
Or action on June twenty-seventh, is that-
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. I'm not going to ask for further discussion unless all of you are dying to talk anymore.
No, no.
Okay, so, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. I think it's clear, motion carries six-one, is that correct? Thank you. All right, we have completed this item, I think we can have further discussions about charging the Calendar Committee for the future, not from the DIAs, I think that we could do in a work session, let's do that particular work in work session.
What do you mean, in a work session, though? Why wouldn't we now say to the Calendar Committee, please do the work, and not do the work, but be-
I'd like to look at reformulating that committee, putting a bus driver on it, that's our board policy.
And, and I'm sorry, it was nineteen-twenty, twenty-twenty, twenty-one, you're right, Mr. Hyren.
I think we need to look at the process that we want to use, we just did this with redistricting, I'm sort of using the same analogy, let's look at it, and let's not do it up here tonight, would be my-
And we can do that over the summer, because we're talking about two years from now, please, not tonight, not next meeting.
Off-site, but, off-site, wow, but the work session is the calendar development process.
Correct, that's what I'm trying to say.
Which we will want to ensure we have all policy available to us related to calendar development, to committee membership, to forming ad hoc committees, to forming or existing committees-
A whole look at it.
And their makeup. Well, I would like to get them working on it, or get them charged with it as soon as possible, so they have ample time of their own-
I would think the formation could follow the same thing with our advisory committees forming in, in September, would be my thought, so, that gives us some time this summer. We are about to go into public comments, however, I see everybody's like-
Point of privilege?
Do we need five minutes?
Five minutes.
I apologize for, let us all walk, walk around, it will help your board members as well, so it will be five minutes, I promise.
Ms. Egan's face after I said five minutes, said it all.
Again, thank you for all of you who stayed for public comments this evening, we normally do not have them this late in the evening, however, it is our night where we, we do a lot of committees, and also, we usually put forth any topics that have generated a lot of debate near the beginning of the, of the agenda, so that more people can see it, so they're not watching that at, well, I'm not going to say two AM in the morning, because I don't plan on being here at two AM in the morning, but, to not, we have been, sometimes I have seen boards that put the controversial items way at the end, so that then nobody's around, so, sometimes that works, sometimes it doesn't, again, so those of you who have stayed, I thank you very much. So, let me talk about how we handle public comment and how this runs. So, any individuals wishing to comment at this time may do so by responding, by me, you can identify yourselves by name, address, organizational affiliation, if you have, if you represent an organization, you will get three minutes, we call it the stoplight system, green will be when you get started, yellow, the light comes on, that means you have one more minute to go, when the red light comes on, I give you about five seconds to wrap up, because that's the conclusion of your three minutes. The chairman reserves the right to restrict the total citizen comment received in any particular meeting to a predetermined maximum number of minutes, with the approval of the board, that you've stayed this late for public comment, I will not certainly be cutting off or limiting it. Although the board provides the opportunity for citizen comment, individuals desiring to register complaints against division employees, programs, services, or activities may also utilize the procedures outlined in Policy eleven-thirteen, public complaints. Just so you know, public comment is just that, it is comment, there will not be a give-and-take with the board, if you have requested a response and checked the box, that is there, sometimes this will generate additional things for our board members to ask, but we will not be having a dialogue together, or we all may be here till two AM, so, I'm trying to avoid that. So like I said, I have a sign-up sheet, if you did not sign up already, that is fine, I can call you at the end, but I am going to go in order with the people who have lined up, what I will ask, is I will call the first about five names, and ask you to line up, first person forward, then everybody else, line up kind of behind that person.
So you can come straight forward.
And don't have to like climb over everybody, so we just kind of do that, after the first five, I'll call five more, we'll go through the list, and then I will ask if anybody else would wish to comment. So, without further ado, we will, these five will be my first, Anthony Bellotti, I think, Katie Reese, the Olin Dick family, Dana Brown, and Michael Brown, if you all could come forward, and approximately in that order, again, when you come up, please tell us who you are and your topic. Again, thank you all.
Howdy, I'm Anthony Bellotti, I attend Colonial Forge High School, I use he/him pronouns, also, I wanted to thank you guys just for the opportunity of letting me speak, it means a lot to me, so I guess I'm going to get started. I've been a student at Colonial Forge High School for three years now, I'm so grateful to have the opportunity to learn at one of Virginia's top high schools, however, it does concern me that there, there are students, like me, that are scared and hidden because of their identity. Bullying and harassment are a part of daily life for queer youth, and students cannot always rely on teachers or to, to understand or take action. I was bullied my sophomore year, I stayed in the closet because of a negative reaction that I had, not only from my family, but also from the friend group that I had built around me, my grades also reflected that, and so did my attendance, over the course of a year, I had missed over fourteen days, and over half, and about half of those were because I didn't feel safe to attend school. I never engaged in class discussions or participated in extracurricular activities, which are a normal part of someone's high school experience. I was constantly stuck between wanting to be myself and wanting to be safe, that is a choice that no one, no one, especially a child, should have to make. Yet, according to Glisten National School Climate Survey, these are common experiences for LGBT youth. The survey found that LGBT students who reported a hostile school environment also had lower GPAs, lower confidence, and more frequent absences than their cis het counterparts. Nationally, LGBT youth are bullied at four times the rate of their, of their non-LGBT peers, and eighty percent of trans students reported feeling unsafe at school. By not providing a safe environment for these students, the school system limits these students' potentials. We need to empower LGBT youth students to reach their full potential by creating inclusive classrooms and empowering them with LGBT role models in curriculum. I propose we do this by creating free workshops that instruct staff on how to support queer students, understand issues unique to that population, and most importantly, how to diffuse homo and transphobia, homo and transphobic bullying within the classroom. With the help from different organizations, which, there are plenty LGBT organizations around us, and I can give you the resources for those, we can offer these workshop, workshops with ease, in doing so, you secure safer, more inclusive classrooms, you cut down on bullying, I also would like to ask that we add more minority figures in curriculum, as to empower LGBT youth while teaching non-LGBT youth students rich, full, and diversity that history, the history of the world has to offer. And, oh my goodness, in closing, because this population is invisible, I understand that it's very easy to forget them, but I urge you to remember and not to forget that schools have both opportunity and obligation to give every student a safe learning environment, and that we're not talking about some abstract idea.
Anthony, I'm going to have to cut-
Okay.
Does everybody see, but if you have something written, you can send it to our clerk, which can be given to the whole board.
Okay, cool, thank you.
Okay, but thank you for staying.
[applause]
Okay, hold on just one second, Mr. Conley had to, had to a conference that he is heading south, that he needed to get in, so he's calling in, so we're going to get him on the phone.
Irene, Irene, do you have a phone charger?
Sorry, technology. He may not be, what we can do, we can try and communicate with him and see if we can figure it out, so come on forward, sorry.
Hello, my name is Katie Reese, and I am a rising senior at North Stafford High School, the world's greatest high school, and today I am here asking for you- the world's greatest high school. And today, I am here asking for you all to provide the needed funds for the replacement and addition to the North Stafford Theater lighting equipment. This would include the repair of the current stage lights, a new spotlight, as well as the addition of six to 10 LED stage lights. Since my sophomore year, I have been involved with drama, the drama program at North. However, I realize that how resource poor the drama department is at North until last month's Fine and Performing Arts Advisory Committee meeting. Currently, I serve on this committee as a student representative. At last month's meeting, we met with drama teachers from Stafford and Mountain View High Schools. And as they were talking about their spaces and resources, I began to realize how limited and underdeveloped North Stafford truly is. From here, I've contacted students from the rest of the high schools in Stafford County and realized, in all honesty, I am not receiving the same theater experience as other high school students. And this is not due to my teacher, but rather due to the resources our drama department has provided. As a stage manager this year, the biggest setback for our various productions we have undertaken has been the lighting system. Currently, over six overhead stage lights work on stage. The rest simply just do not work. And additionally, two of our catwalk stage lights need replacement, and our 25-year-old spotlight recently just broke. The saving grace of our Spring Musical fame this year was the rental of six Rogue R1 Wash LED lights, which brought the technical aspect of our production to a whole new level. As of next year, due to Mountain View's addition of a black box theater, North Stafford will be the only high school in Stafford County without LED lights. These lights, along with the lighting improvements I proposed, will present the opportunity to not only help drama performances, but also any other group or organization that uses the auditorium. Around a month ago, North Stafford High School was the host of Electrify Your Strings, where the county brought in electric violinists to pay with the local middle school students. LED lights would have been able to switch colors on the spot and create a visual display to go along with the tone of music. Over my past two years, I have discovered a home in North Stafford's Fine Arts Department. And quite honestly, I discovered that the department is neglected by the county. I was offended earlier this year when many county citizens complained about the prospect of their children being transferred to North. And while we have a wonderful staff, there is just a disparity in resources. Please consider my request, and thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Scott Oldendick. This is my wife Amy and my son Tyler. We are here today to ask for your reconsideration for a denial to our request to have Tyler transfer to Brookpoint High School. Tyler is currently a rising junior at Stafford High School. He's in the STAT program, in the IT section of that program. We had submitted a formal application previously, and I think that either we didn't do a good job communicating, or maybe it was misunderstood, the reason for the transfer. The letter that we got back stated that it was due to, or that there was transportation provided from Stafford to Brookpoint. That was not the reason that we had requested the transfer. Rather, the reason for the transfer is really Tyler being in the STAT program. He's a terrific student, honor roll student, enjoys the program very much. But he's been exposed to two schools. And Brookpoint is where he's found a stronger connection with the school. He takes all of his core classes at Brookpoint. He only takes the electives at Stafford High School. And probably, most importantly, is that Tyler has really applied himself after school at Brookpoint because his Brookpoint classes end the day at Brookpoint. So, he's involved in some after-school programs there, one being VA Stars. It's a volunteer program. Students show up after school. They rebuild computers that are then donated. And Tyler has over 40 hours of service time built in from that program. Next year, he'll be a junior. He would flip his time. Brookpoint would become the morning portion of his schedule. Stafford would be the afternoon. He'd be leaving behind the work that he started in the VA program that he wants to continue on as he wants to pursue a career in information technology programming realm. So, when he started the program, the guidance counselor, Tyler's biggest concern with the program was the travel aspect of it, mainly, you know, how to manage two schools. His guidance counselor at the time had said, you know, many students, once they hit their junior year, will transfer into Brookpoint at the time and just go on full-time. I don't think Tyler really considered that at the time, but now that he has developed that stronger connection at Brookpoint, that's where he wants to finish his high school career. And I think he's looking for more of a traditional finish to his high school career to get him ready for college. So, we ask you for your reconsideration, and thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hi, I just need to, I'm Dana Brown. I just need to set this up really quick. I'm Dana Brown. I'm a parent. I'm also on the calendar committee. I'm here to talk as a parent. I only have three minutes, so I'm going to go super, super fast. First thing, we normally get the calendar to you in March every year. We are really late. I don't know why. This has been delayed until after school has got out. Second, you guys directed the calendar committee a few years ago to do two years at a time. The last couple of years, we have done that. Somehow, between our committee and your board, those calendars have gotten lost, one year's worth each time. We've submitted two, only one came up. Both of them, coincidentally, were post-Labor Day. Don't know what happened to the rest. Mr. Hirons, I don't know if you're reading my mind. We haven't talked, but you mentioned the 2010 meeting. I was there. Ms. Egan, you were there in the front row. You're in the video. I have a video clip of that meeting where we talk about the cost in there because that's really important. And this is Bob Randall, our energy auditor.
My second question is, as you probably know, we're dealing with a potential change in the calendar for bringing it, the school calendar, one week or three weeks earlier. So, that would mean starting three weeks into August, or the last, sorry, the second week of August, or the last week of August. I've been trying to understand the, how significant, if at all, the specific dollar figures of energy cost would be for those two scenarios, which we're going to be voting on shortly, not tonight, but probably next time. How much is it going to cost us to operate the schools starting three weeks before Labor Day, or one week before, in energy costs?
I've given Mr. Hirons, and I thought-
Okay.
Did he share that with the board?
I guess he must have. I didn't, do we have those numbers?
I don't remember seeing it.
Because that's very germane to our discussion.
No.
We don't, we don't have a dollar figure? Not to my knowledge.
We can get it for you. We can get it.
Okay, but, and I think we'd need it sooner rather than later, in terms of this is a huge figure. It might have some bearing.
You're trading a June day for an August day.
Well, I understand that. We understand that, but we haven't gotten any specific figures.
You know, it could cost you, you know, I can't pull the numbers out of my head.
Is it $10 or a million dollars?
Oh, it's going to, it's going to be significant. It's going to cost you probably four or $500,000.
Maybe a half a million. I think that's something that we really need to know.
Remember what the numbers were, Scott? I don't remember.
Okay. And, yeah, so if we can get that, that would be, and then my final point is just a very-
That was all that was on the calendar. My husband was going to speak behind me to play the other video, the other clip, and it was about why it was going to cost a million dollars. So, I'll email all those clips to you. But again, you guys did, there are over $20,000 to hire one and a half diagnosticians, okay? Because you don't want to spend 20 grand. $40,000, we don't have a firefighter training program because you don't want to waste $40,000. But you want to waste half a million for nothing? I mean, the supervisors might take issue with that, but thank you.
All right. Ms. Brown, you said Michael was not speaking. Was that correct?
No, he was going to give us the other, the other video.
Okay. All right. I just, no, I'm just checking. I'm trying to keep. Next, I have Anna Killian, Kristin Barnes, Stacy Sykes, and Christine Sussman.
It's about to get real. All right. Hello, my name is Anna Killian, and I live at 309 Distoryo Co., which is in the Acquia District. So, I wrote this really pretty speech, and I talked about how I'm on the calendar committee, and it's fabulous, and we had a great time, and we developed two calendars. It was all really fair and fabulous. And we really were concerned about vacation days and giving vacation to the kids, and when the best time to travel is. And we took into consideration a lot of different things. But here's the deal. I'm not going to talk about this because this isn't germane anymore, because you guys have already had a pretty significant discussion. So, this is, I spent all day on this, and it's not, I'm not going to speak about it anymore because now I have other things to say. So, here's the deal. I was on the elementary redistricting committee a couple of years ago when we did that. And all of you remember that we, the committee, spent a significant amount of time developing a redistricting strategy for the elementary schools. And guess what? You decided that that wasn't the way you wanted to go and did your own calendar, did your own maps. And this is exactly what I'm seeing now. There is no transparency. You can pretend that that's what you do, and that's what you want, and blah, blah, blah. But unless you charge us as a committee with something specific, this is what you're going to get. So, it's not, why in the world do you even ask for committee input when you don't take it and when you don't give us direction? This is what you get when you don't give direction. So, you can talk about how, you know, you think it's hotter in August than June, but it doesn't matter. We're talking about the students here. I don't care if it's cheaper to go to the Outer Banks in August than it is in June. That's not the consideration. The consideration is that we are giving students more time to prepare for tests. That is what this should be about. I don't care. My daughter, my fifth-grade daughter, spent all day at Pratt Park today for Dare Day. Did she die? No, she didn't die. I'm not talking, it's just a 20-minute bus ride versus an entire day at Pratt Park in 100-degree heat. That's okay. But having a kid on a bus for 20 minutes is not. Look, I have spent a lot of time on committees for this school system. I have been an active, engaged, loving participant, and caring only about the students of this school system. Today, I have questioned whether I should stay, whether I should care anymore. And I'm going to stay for now, but I'm going to say, this is not fair.
Good evening. My name is Kristin Barnes. I currently have a student at Colonial Forge, as well as a 2013 graduate of Colonial Forge. For the last 12 years, I have held either a PTSO chair position or board position at every level, including the last two years as vice president of Colonial Forge, and the two years before that as vice president at Thompson. I've also been a member of the superintendent's parent advisory committee for the last two years, and was also on the calendar committee last year. So, tonight I would like to talk about a couple of things. The first, and the current hot topic, is the pre or post-Labor Day start. I would like to advocate for keeping the traditional post-Labor Day start. I have heard many arguments for a pre-Labor Day start. It has been argued that kids that participate in sports and other extracurricular activities are already in school anyway. That may be true for a few students, but the majority of students from K through 12, who do not play fall sports or participate in band, should not be forced to start school early just because the football team or the band are already in practice. It has also been argued that starting school before Labor Day will improve AP and SOL scores. However, there is absolutely no evidence to date that a post-Labor Day start puts our kids at any disadvantage. There is simply nothing to show that students who start school in August, as opposed to students who start school in September, score better on AP, IB, or SOL exams. There is nothing to show that students who start school in September have lower college admission rates, miss out on athletic opportunities, summer camps, or any of the other reasons that have been mentioned in support of a pre-Labor Day start. I have heard some say that it's just common sense that scores will improve with a few extra weeks of classes before AP and SOL tests. If that were true, then data showing the significant benefit of a pre-Labor Day start would indeed be very common. And yet, it is not. In my position of leadership, over the last few years, I have had opportunity to talk with many parents on this issue. Parents and families know what they want. They want adequate and accurate information and surveys that do not clearly steer them in one direction. Many parents and families that support a pre-Labor Day start do so because they like the schedule better and have a student that would personally benefit from a new calendar. That should not be the basis to change a school calendar that has worked so well for our very successful students of Stafford County. A decision of this magnitude should be data-driven and fact-based, using unbiased surveys and clear-cut answers. And lastly, on this subject, on a personal note, I think it's a terrible idea to put our students on hot, un-air-conditioned buses during the hottest and most humid time of the year. I simply would not want my kid on a bus all August. That's just not a very healthy thing for me to consider. There may be other hot activities. I might not consider those as well. I do have several other topics that I have covered, but I'm almost out of time. It's on my paper here. You guys can take a look at it and appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. And that goes for anybody who has comments that either, if you have them written and want to make sure we have a copy, you can give them to our clerk. Sorry.
Hi. Good evening. My name is Stacy Sykes, and I live in Autumn Ridge. My neighborhood is being considered for being a non-transportation zone for the 2018 school year. I am here to discuss my concerns regarding this proposal. First, I would like to acknowledge that I understand the county's fiscal constraints regarding busing the children of this county. And second, that bus drivers are in short supply. It makes perfect sense for our neighborhood that is in such close proximity to the school to walk. Currently, my son does walk to and from school. However, over the last year, traffic on Eustis Road has increased, as well as the speed of the drivers. I would recommend you ask our crossing guard Sarah Myers, who initially was a volunteer, how scary the traffic has been over this last year. She's been an advocate for the safety of our children and a resource that our school cannot live without. But here is the problem. She is just a crossing guard, and drivers don't seem to care about her safety or the safety of the children. Furthermore, the new road that will open August 1st connecting Courthouse Road to Embry Mill, through the Embry Mill development, will only increase the traffic on Eustis Road. During our meetings with Mr. Hirons, he agreed that the impending increase in traffic with the opening of Embry Mill was a concern. And as well, he believed a stop sign at the intersection of Live Oak and Eustis would be a solution to slowing down the traffic. However, VDOT, to my most recent knowledge, will only approve a flashing crosswalk light. I don't believe this will be a safe solution. I know that without our buses and without the installation of a stop sign, when the traffic worsens, many parents in our neighborhood will choose to drive their children to school. This will increase the number of cars pulling in and out of HH Pool parking lot, increasing the traffic on Eustis, and decreasing the safety of the children who have no choice but to walk. Therefore, I would like the board to consider voting no on this proposal. Let Autumn Ridge keep our buses for the 2018 school year. Please vote no until Embry Mill is officially open. A traffic study can be completed, and there is an accurate data on the number of vehicles driving on Eustis. Please vote no until VDOT approves a stop sign at Live Oak and Eustis. Thank you for your time.
Hello, my name is Christine Sussman, and I have a student at Mountain View, and ID right. I'm going to explain to you my personal experience with the survey for the calendar. I received a robo-call and an email on June 1st stating that the survey was to be sent out on June 1st or the 2nd. And in that email, it stated that the intent of the survey was to gather information and to make an informed decision. On June 5th, I still hadn't gotten that said survey, so I tried to find out how to get one. And after several failed attempts, I was given Cherie's information. I expressed my interest to Cherie in having my voice heard on the topic and CC'd all of you. Ms. Hazard, you were the first one to reply, and you expressed trust in the fact that I would get a survey. My reply to you was, quote, "I don't understand how I could receive the first email, but not receive the most important part, which was the survey." Stafford County Public Schools has my correct information. Aren't the email distribution lists the same? There are several families, at least a dozen that I know of, who have never gotten the survey. I am just one person. Imagine how many people countywide- Imagine how many people countywide have not gotten this survey and had no idea when the deadline was. In all of the information I had received, there was no return by date. So people never replied by the date, which was Tuesday. It looks to me that the survey is just something you guys had to do and your minds were already made up. The change of schedule is a big consideration for many families and I wish more time was given to the matter by the board to have it run more smoothly and to guarantee people didn't fall through the cracks. It's very disappointing. When I finally spoke to Cherie, she was more than helpful, even forwarded me a link to the survey, but I couldn't use it. Because the survey clearly states, do not forward the survey because it's specific to an email. So I was so close in getting that survey. When raising the question with Cherie about how I can get one email, but not the other, and aren't the distribution lists the same, her reply was, you would think they would be. I also verified that Stafford County Public School had my correct email. Finally, at 4:50 Tuesday, June 6th, 24 hours after I sent my first email, I got the survey and proudly selected option B for a post-Labor Day start. How many people spent a whole day trying to find a survey? Not too many. After a while, it became a mission. If your intent is stated and your original email was to gather information for parents, guardians, staff members, to make an informed decision regarding the calendar, you clearly missed the mark. I do not feel the parents were given all the information upfront, i.e. a simple return by date. I would ask that, given the importance of the topic, it be tabled for this school year, revisited with ample time and manpower given to it, and guarantee the survey results are accurate.
Thank you. Next on my list, I have Danielle Kushner, John Leonard, and Joe Godsy. If anybody's still here.
Hello, my name is Danielle Kushner. I have a student at Mountain View/Norris Stafford. He attends CGS. I also have a student at AG Wright. I'm here to speak about the school calendar for 2018. You've covered a lot of the topics. However, I want to reiterate, as a parent, how I feel about this. I'm against the pre-Labor Day start. The reason stated was instructional days prior to exams. Parents have not been given data to back up the need to have early start date. A couple of concerns I have is the high temperature on the school buses in August. Some students are on the bus for up to an hour since the redistricting. It's been brought up about Dare Day. I doubt you're going to serve popsicles and water on the school buses. Information has not been given to parents in regards to the cost of cooling our schools. I would like spring break to be linked to Easter. Data has not been given to parents supporting an early spring break in regards to test scores or instructional times before exams. More information is needed to be given to parents before parents can make an informed decision and before the board can consider what parents want. Due diligence has not been done to inform our parents. I also ask that this vote be tabled until later in the fall. I would hate to vote to be done in July while most families are vacationing. I would be very disappointed if the board took a backdoor approach on this topic. Please take the time to properly inform our parents. I vote post-Labor Day. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Joe Godsy. I live in the Falmouth District. A short history lesson as a history teacher about education and economics in Stafford County. Once upon a time, the Board of Supervisors' budget for schools used to be 70% of the county's revenue. Somewhere along the way, they dropped that to an unfathomable 54%, begging us all to wonder, where did the other 16% go? Sigh. AAA bond rating. Well, we're teachers, we can only write 1A at a time on an assignment. Going into education shouldn't be about the money. But when the money to make ends meet evaporates, so will the pool of quality teachers. If we are serious about attracting and retaining the highest standards of teachers, pay scale, insurance, and retirement benefits must reflect that assertion, or we're simply spinning our wheels and we've just recently gotten the contracts. Again, pay scale, insurance, and retirement should not be used as categories in which to cover offsets and budgetary shortcomings or political oversights. On a primary note, two of our former Board of Supervisors who ran on today's election under fiscal responsibility, no taxes, lost. We want to pretend that we are professionals, the highest in our field. What would happen if the medical industry were told, doctors and nurses, you have too much experience, we can no longer afford to pay you for your expertise, but we're going to try and keep you by increasing your patient load, raise your cost of insurance, and then cut your retirement benefits that you were sold on Stafford County in the first place? We know you'll be back, because where else will you go? Westmoreland County? Fingers can be pointed across the road. It's the Board of Supervisors' fault, they didn't raise taxes. But they can point at us and say, we gave you exactly what you asked for and not a penny on the 100th more. The Board of Supervisors doesn't need to raise the tax rate, they just need to make Stafford County Public Schools their priority again, even if that's a line-by-line funding. Pairs, bus drivers, clerical staff, teachers. Our pair of pay is immoral. What we ask the pairs to do for that paltry amount is inexcusable. The daily expectation is so high, we should ask them to do less with the little bit that we give them. Most of our pairs have more individual contact with our students than our administrators. Maybe we should flip that pay scale. My wife and I are both teachers. Four years ago, when we got rid of the scale, we throw it out. We still know what this number is. To date, it's $27,569.85. That's what I'm missing. That's what we'll pay for my Caitlin to go to Virginia Tech in the fall. Lena's pay, which is the same amount, will pay for Kristin to be a junior at Virginia Tech. Thank you.
If there's anybody else who wishes to address the board, if you would come from your seat and just line up behind the speakers, if you have not signed in, if you would, after you speak, sign in before you leave. Come on down.
I'm Dorothy Wood. I'm the Hartwood District and I represent the Hartwood District on the Calendar Committee. I want to address some opinions that have come up in this process. One thing was the first survey. Many have said that it was meant to mislead. The committee wanted to see if there was enough interest and/or support of a pre-Labor Day calendar. And questions were used from a Spotsylvania County Public Schools survey. These questions asked how important or not important certain criteria would be to our constituents. These were specific to a pre-Labor Day calendar. If the results came back overwhelmingly negative or not important, then there would be no need to spend any more time discussing a pre-Labor Day calendar. However, the results supported us to further investigate. As we moved through the process, the benefits of a pre-Labor Day calendar became more apparent to me. Labor Day calendar is driven by the uninterrupted delivery of instruction. The end of the second quarter is before winter break and spring break is at the end of the third quarter. These are sensible breaks, not meant to disrupt the delivery of instructions. Students will have more instruction time prior to the SOL window. Seat time, it's about seat time and how much, and leveling the playing field with other counties that start prior to us. IBAP students have an additional 12 days of instruction. Think about the millions of students that start before Labor Day. We're leveling the playing field for our students. CGS students would start instruction at the same time as their peers in other counties. More consideration given to our military families who'll be moving. So often, they're packed, their stuff is gone, and they're still here because their students are still in school. Orientation for colleges and universities, both in-state and out-state, are held the beginning of June. Many have to be excused from school just to attend these. There are two additional four-day weekends for students. Were created during President's Day weekend and Easter weekend, two weeks off for winter break. Who wouldn't love that? And especially, no homework, or very little. Not all Stafford employees live in Stafford. Living in a county with a pre-Labor Day start with children, there are childcare concerns when calendars don't match up. And students would actually be able to compete for better jobs during the summer with college students. They could start earlier. Now, in your haste, you may not have noticed that in the packet, there is a report from Mr. Haran that actually states, if we went to a pre-Labor Day calendar, there would be $42,000 in savings. That's savings. So if we really want to evolve, to be, want to evolve and be innovative, our school system cannot accept the status quo. I urge you to be bold and don't be afraid of change. Think outside the box, that's what we ask our students to do.
Sign in, Dorothy. Come on forward.
Hi, I'm Jennifer Lombardo. I live in the Falmouth District. I'm the Calendar Committee representative from Falmouth. And I just wanted to comment, if you do go forward, looking at how that Calendar Committee is structured and operates, with a few comments that you might want to take into consideration. I was a military member, I have worked in the research and development side with some Marine Force, supporting decision-making process. And going into this committee, I found that I was hoping there might be more information available to the committee from staff. And some of the items that I would have liked to have seen going into that would have been things like that data about instruction. Instead, other members of the committee, myself, went and tried to look for data and how different dates impacted instruction, dates impacted test scores, and there wasn't there. Okay, so maybe they can't provide any. Well, there was one study and it was done by a UVA professor. Granted, it was financed, the study was financed by the Tourism Board, but that study found, very specific to Virginia, that SOL scores for waiver schools were actually worse. So that's the only thing I could find, could find. So maybe asking the people that do this for a living to go and do that research and provide that data to the committee, so then they can bring it forward, might be appropriate. The second thing was a legal opinion on how that waiver process works. If we have this tenure window, we should have support from staff that shows us where we are in that window and where we are in that process, because it is an annual renewal of that waiver that's required. So going into it, the committee should know where they are in that window and is there a possibility they'd have to flip up again next year? That's something I think could be provided. Two more things. System lifecycle. You take your HVAC systems, you take your buses, you run them in a hotter part of the year. There's going to be a lifecycle shortening that's associated with that. I'd see that that might be something to consider, that I don't know that we look at real well in this county. Buses themselves, very informal survey, friends with friends, family members in Georgia, kids are passing out on buses, they now buy water and provide bottles of water to the kids. So is that a cost? You know, we can go out and look for this, but more appropriately, it might be a question coming from your central office to somewhere else. And the last thing is, I am a kindergarten para. Mr. McCosker asked about kindergarten and I think that would be appropriate, to maybe ask those kind of questions if we're pushing this start. We're not just looking at the four years' worth of kids that are in high school, we're looking at a number of years' worth of kids that are younger. And I would see it impact our classroom dramatically this past year. We are not at that target number, max 24. We started there this year. We have one class at my school that's a 27, two at 26, and the other at 24. It's crazy. Thank you.
I'm so short. It'll work okay.
It's okay, you can pull it down. It does come down.
I'm on the Price is Right, this is great. Happy Pride, everybody. Happy Pride, everybody. I am Leslie Cook, I'm a clinical psychologist in Stafford and Fredericksburg, I'm a parent of children in Stafford. I'm a bi-woman and a mother of a queer daughter. So I was so excited to get my little flyer for this meeting about coming and speaking on behalf of LGBT youth. And then I was dismayed, disheartened, disappointed, shocked, and pretty angry that we had one person come to speak. And that we spent 90% of the time discussing opinions on a calendar, that you didn't have sufficient data to back up. And that's not, I understand, that's not your fault. And whoever brought that data question up, I mean, this is a room of educators and parents and we didn't have data to look at. So that is a travesty, I think. If we're concerned about heat, then we should have heat data. If we're concerned about SOLs, we should have SOL data. Anybody knows that debating things based on opinion alone is going to get a whole lot of what we just had. So in terms of LGBT youth, one of the things I'd like to encourage you on the board to do is to do this again, to send, I don't know who sent the flyers out, if it was just schools or if it was the board themselves, do this again, but invite more people, talk more loudly about it. That was not grammatically correct, but that's all right, it's late. The calendar is important, but tonight LGBT and queer youth are dying tonight. They're taking their own lives tonight. They're not feeling safe tonight. And while Stafford, I will say, I have been thoroughly impressed by the Sage program and some of the other programs. In Stafford, I have worked with many children in Stafford who have tried to take their own lives, who have not felt safe and secure enough with their teachers, parents, and students to be out and be proud. And at this time, you know, in 2017, where we have this beautiful, beautiful parade that happened with no major, besides a little counter protest, which was okay, no major injuries, no major harm came to anyone, we're moving forward, where is everyone to talk about this in our school systems? Why was it about the calendar so much? Why aren't we talking about what these kids need in our schools? So I would encourage you to please keep pushing this issue, please keep inviting us. I'd love to see an informational talk happen at one of these meetings or push people to come. I want more youth to speak up. This is such an important issue. And we don't all have to agree about the politics behind the issue, but we do have to agree that kids deserve to be safe and educated and that we all have to do our part to do that. So thank you very much.
Sign in, if you don't mind. Thank you.
Sign in so we can put you on a committee.
I just changed jobs, so I'm available.
Watch what you ask for. Sorry.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board. My name's Terri Welborn. I live in the Falmouth District and as you can tell by my shirt, I am a bus driver. I am also the chairperson of the Bus Driver ESP Caucus for the SEA. And I wanted to address some issues with the calendar. While in the past, there hasn't been a rep from Transportation on the committee, there probably should have been, but this issue hasn't come up before. And I'm not very good at winging it, so forgive me, I just have notes. So it was mentioned that temperatures are actually hotter in July than August. I'm not sure they really are, but the average humidity is not 90% in July. And bus drivers years ago were not on buses for seven hours, it was a part-time job, couple hours a day. Now, bus drivers are on the bus six to seven hours, about 3:00 in the morning, 3:00, 3:30 in the afternoon, in the heat of the day, the time when you are not supposed to even go outside, 2:00 to 5:00. You're not even supposed to go outside in the middle of August and we were on buses. Today was hot, I drove Dare Day, I was out there, got back on the bus, it was hot, we were loaded with kids and had a couple emergencies, so we were sitting, fully loaded with kids in 90-degree temps. For the normal bus ride, kids are on the bus, anywhere from 10, 15. My average route is 45 minutes for my longest child, but I'm on the bus, three hours in the morning, 3:30 in the afternoon. The average temperature for July and August, while they may be the same, the average temperature in July is much, it's cooler in the morning and then it heats up. In August, you wake up to 90-degree temperatures. And the comment, did we have AC years ago, I feel is a very condescending comment, because while we didn't, we were not on buses that long, like we are now. When I was in California, growing up, we got out of school when it got hot. We didn't have AC. They let us out of school and it was not as hot and humid as it is here. The average weather report for August, hazy hot and humid, hazy hot and humid, every day for the last three weeks of August. I feel that if you postponed the decision, it would give more time to retrofit the buses. It's like, I think, a million dollars to retrofit the majority of the mainstream. I feel that if you postponed the decision, it would give more time to retrofit the buses. It's like, I think, a million dollars to retrofit the majority of the mainstream buses with air conditioning. And then I would also like to request that you put a representative from Transportation on the committee. We also have a big issue with the early outs for elementary-only. Causes some problems. And I would like to mention that the Calendar Committee did not actually make a recommendation to this board on what their data and what their information meant for them as a committee. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Hironz. Dr. Benson, members of the board. I am Christian Peabody. I'm the music teacher at Falmouth Elementary and the vice president-elect of the Stafford Education Association. I'm not speaking about either for or against an official capacity of the calendar right now. I would like to follow up Ms. Terri Welborn's point, though, about the comments about the heat, especially given that there was not a Transportation member on the committee. They have been, I can already tell you from members right now, they've, I have a lot of Transportation members who have felt like they've been, had very condescending remarks directed towards them, things simply as to put the windows down, countered by Mr. McCosker's valid point of there's humidity. Hot's hot. The reality of having 50, I believe is the average, 50 kids on a bus and not accounting for what is their behavior like for that bus driver. So moving forward in the discussions, I just, please encourage the board and the committee, we know they did a wonderful job, they had a very difficult task ahead of them. And you guys have a very, I know, long night and week ahead of you with the follow-through for these calendars. But please, yes, consider having a member of Transportation on. And just for everyone tonight, really think about the verbiage you were using when incorporating a population of people that are being affected and they haven't been included thoroughly in this process. So, thank you.
Good evening, or maybe night now. My name is Amy Hall. I live in the Rock Hill District. I've come tonight to ask about the rumored change in the Colonial Forge class scheduling for next year. I say rumored, because there has not been any information provided to students or their families about this change. And when no information is provided, the rumor mill runs overdrive. Rumor has it that it is a 4x4 block schedule for both core classes and electives. Rumor has it that it's a pilot program, that none of the other high schools has a true 4x4 schedule. Rumor has it that this schedule makes it possible to offer more courses with fewer teachers. Rumor has it that the fine arts performance classes will be limited to one semester, or that the audition groups will be year-long courses. I've heard both. Basically, it boils down to, we don't know anything. My daughter has asked her guidance counselor and her teachers how the new schedule will affect her senior year. No one has any idea. I'm actually in favor of the option of offering semester courses. My son benefited from the opportunity to take Latin 1 and 2 in one year. It worked out quite well for him. He was able to handle the workload and was able to enhance his college applications. It was a great choice for him. But choice is the key word. Some kids thrive in the fast-paced environment of a semester class. Others love the opportunity to knock out a requirement and move on to new challenges. Yet there are other kids who will not thrive in such an intense environment, and those kids should have the choice to take the time they need to grasp the material. The school board tried a new way of communicating with parents during the recent redistricting. In my opinion, it was a great improvement. While you can't please everyone, it was encouraging to see so many parents involved from the beginning. You publicized all meeting dates at the beginning of the process. You held meetings in locations and encouraged participation. You definitely opened the doors to the process. Why would the decision to change the schedule at Forge be cloaked in secrecy? The rumor mill would suppose that it's because you don't want us to know what's happening. I'm not sure why it's so, but it's not in keeping with your previous actions. I did want to highlight a report that's titled Semesterization Instruction of Core Academic Subjects in U.S. High Schools: A Review of Research in Education and Cognitive Psychology. And it found that data showed negative consequences in math, foreign language, science, English, and history, that formerly excellent schools slumped into mediocrity after the switch. Bottom line, we just want to know what is going on. I specifically, or I respectfully request that you provide information about the planned changes as soon as possible. Thank you.
Don't forget to sign in.
She was, I mean, she was right, you were right, I mean, you were like, right on, like, goodbye, kink. Did you hear that?
I know.
That was good.
Hello, everybody. George Legel. I'm a bus driver also, and I was at Dare Day today. And yes, it was hot. Okay, mine is going to be really, really quick, okay? A 20-minute bus ride for a child goes along with an eight-hour day for a lot of bus drivers. Not just 3:00 in the morning. We do have a lot of mid-days that have to be covered as well. And I am just going to touch on your memories a little bit. The very first part of last year, what was the biggest complaint that we had at the first two meetings of the school board? Bus overcrowding. Overcrowd buses in September, we can deal with. Overcrowd them in the middle of August, I don't think y'all want that. Thank you for your time. Like I said, I'll just go do it short and sweet. Everybody have a great night. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Brigitte Farrell-Kuzma, Rock Hill District. I'm both parent and teacher in the county. I have four children, grades 8, 6, 4, and 2. And I came here tonight with my DI team as a member of the Gifted Advisory Committee with no plans to speak. And I'm here with my eighth grader who's still here. She's not going to school and taking exams tomorrow, so. But just some observations I've had about a lot of different things. I so appreciate what you do for the county, what you do for lots of people. As I sat here as a member of a committee, yes, we're appointed, but everybody attends those committee meetings on their own time. And when I listen to everything directed at the Calendar Committee, Ms. Decatur, I appreciated that you jumped in, because that's what I was feeling. Please recognize that this is all volunteer time. And I appreciate all your questions, but I was thinking, wow, if this is what happens when you come with a slightly controversial, loaded topic as a volunteer member, I think if people see this, they are not going to want to be members of these committees. So I've been a member of the Gifted Advisory Committee for years. I have been a DI team manager for years. And I've come back into the classroom recently, and I'm so fortunate to teach at Garrisonville. And, but I am seeing loss of morale across the board, because we're worried about the quality of teachers, we're worried about the decreasing candidate pool. And just what is being asked of teachers, especially, and this is not a great time of year for anybody, teacher, to be speaking about all that needs to be done. But I just wanted to say I greatly appreciate all that you do, and please think about all of those volunteer hours and all that people are watching, children, adults, from professional behavior of our school board members. So thank you very much.
Okay. Anybody else wish to speak? Okay, nobody's climbing over the seats. So at this time, I will close public comment. We are not having our board member committee or board member comments. However, I will take the privileges shared to say, many of us very much enjoyed being with our retirees, and we would really like to thank them on behalf of the board and the division. We had 58 retirees. There was over 1,300, I think, in 43 hours, I mean, years of service that was, that was represented that night, and it was a wonderful evening to celebrate those that were retiring. So I just want to say congratulations to the retirees. Dr. Benson kept trying to see if they wanted to come back. He had their contracts ready, so just wanted to mention that. Next, I will ask, Dr. Benson, do you have any comments?
Madam Chair, I do not.
All right. Next, we will move on to consent items. Second. It's been moved and seconded regarding consent. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
The staff is passing chocolate around right now. They've got chocolate in their hands. Ms. Cale?
Okay, next is our action item. This is regarding the superintendent's proposed policy on pay banding. Any questions or comments?
Motion to approve.
It's been, there's been motion on the table. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
I do want to make a quick comment, just because, I know, I know. Excuse me. But I do want to make sure it's very clear that this is service employees, this is not related to the teacher compensation model. Some of that, I've gotten a couple of questions from teachers or complaints from teachers. It's like, what are you doing to me? And it is not teachers, okay?
Thank you, Mr. Hironz.
All those in favor?
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Motion carries unanimously. Next, moving on to the proposed policy regarding acceptable use of technology. I believe the to-do item from that was whether we had legal review. Dr. Benson, was that completed? That was what I believe the request was. Yes? It was, but I think you had a request that it be reviewed by legals. So I just wanted, yes or no? But, okay.
Yes, we did. We had two lawyers on staff look at it, and we had an outside attorney look at it for...
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right, moving on to our information items. The first one...
Madam Chairman, before we start, in the past, when we've had some exceptionally long nights for information items, we have asked the board if they have any questions about particular items. And if there were no questions, then we just moved on to the next. If that was something we would consider doing this evening, you know, I would appreciate it.
Me too.
Yep, I'm good with that. Our first one is 13.01 regarding Autumn Ridge subdivision as a non-transportation zone. Are there any questions, are there any questions from board members?
I get in trouble if I do. I don't want, I don't want anybody to get up and answer questions. I do, I would like some response to the concerns that were brought to us during public comment.
I was going to say that, if you haven't, so. All right. If nothing else specific, let's move on to 13.02. This is regarding the use of parking fees for pavement and maintenance at multiple places. Any comments? All right. Moving on to 13.03. This is, this was a summary of, or a discussion of our work session regarding use of proffer funds and operating funds for the rebuild of Moncur Elementary. I know we had put forth a strategy of continuing to meet regarding this item, and I believe that we have put it on for...
27th.
I believe we were going to talk about it in work session on the 20th, I thought, as well.
Right. We're also going to address it on the 26th and the 27th.
So it's going to be a popular item?
I want 13.03.
Yes.
Okay. I'm just noticing at the bottom, if approved, staff plan to award contract and issue notice to proceed on June 28th, but we do have a meeting scheduled prior to that in order to approve. Is that what I'm saying?
Yes, our, this will be on our two weeks on there, but we will also, as of right now, have a placeholder for work session on the 20th, should we need it, since we have that already scheduled. All right, 13.04. This is about carpets. Sorry, I didn't read quick enough. Using FY operating funds. I believe this one, it was already a budgeted item. Any questions? Hearing none. I will move on. It does say that it is already a budgeted item. All right, moving on to 13.05. This is regarding asphalt and sealing, using FY annual operating funds to perform track overlay and issue things at Drew Middle School. Any concerns?
It's budgeted.
Madam Chairman, just an observation. On some of these items, if there's no questions or anybody doesn't get back to you with any issues, I'd suggest we put them on the consent the next time, so we don't have to...
Right, they will be.
Go through so many.
Yes, no, I agree. But we can't put them on at the beginning. The next one is 13.06 regarding painter, painting, a service contract for painting. Many of these come forward at the end of the year to use those. They are, appears to be budgeted funds. Next, we will go on to 13.07, which is an increase in the lunch and breakfast price levels. This, I believe, is dictated through federal, let's see.
Okay, but I do have a question, real quick. Make it snappy. Didn't we just have one of these?
We have them almost every year.
No, this year, an increase. This, I feel like this is the second one we're approving this school year.
I don't know off the top of my head. I'm sorry.
It does say there needs to be gradual increases until we reach a certain...
Come on, Ford, Berkeley. Since you stayed, we certainly didn't want you not to get to have your two seconds.
Yeah, I get to drive an hour home.
I know, I'm sorry.
So I'm good to go. So there's a price increase every year, but it starts at the beginning of the year. So the, you guys probably voted on one around this time last year. That took effect at the beginning of this year. This price increase will take effect next year, and it's state-mandated.
Okay.
We don't really have a choice. They stopped funding us.
Thank you. We don't want you to run out of money.
Thank you, guys.
By the way, you're feeling Mr. Sly's shoes very well. Thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Next, we have the, readapt the regulation regarding the code of conduct. What it appears that there was a committee that was working on this and that it did not come forward as in need of revision, according to this.
Nothing has changed?
That's what it says.
Daryl, so you're on here, right, Daryl, of course?
That's right.
All right. Daryl, how you doing? Come up and say a quick hello.
Mr. McCosker. Please. He's a lawyer. We don't need this.
I wrote him a note that said, let's keep comments short.
Thank you.
So out of all those discipline committees that we sat through together over the years, so just, everything is good to go?
Everything's good to go. I think the committee was very pleased with how the code of conduct worked this year.
Okay.
And we appreciate your annual review.
And this...
The first time in 21 years, we've not come forward with an amendment.
Well, hold on.
Here we go.
Okay, no, I just, oh, I'm going on and off here. No, I just wanted to thanks, thank you for your work.
Madam Chair, I apologize. I don't recall exactly with the cell phone policy and the cell phone discipline items.
Please.
It's still, it's still a significant concern. I'm still getting emails and calls from teachers and parents.
Vote against it. We're reinstituting it. We'll just vote again. I'm going to vote against it next time. I'm still going to vote against it.
It's a pilot, right?
That was going to be my question, if you'll allow me to ask a question.
Sure.
The pilot portion, we removed the pilot portion last year, correct? Because the direction was to enable, well, that's in the policy, but, so I'm not going to get into that. This is the code of conduct. But that was my concern. The pilot was removed, and this has, you know, what we adopted last year as part of it, right?
That's, that's right.
All right.
Exactly the same as last year.
To Mr. Hironz's point, though, Madam Chair, I think we do, this summer, it would be nice to come back to us with a little, a back brief on what are the incidents? How are the schools? Come back to us and tell us if it's working or not. You know, did the pilot work?
But that's a question for Dr. Benson, not for Mr. Nelson. All he's doing is bringing his recommendation that there's no change in the code of conduct. So if we want, we have these issues, we need to bring them to our chair or to Dr. Benson.
Yeah, I just did. So there you go.
Again, as Ms. Healy stated, if there are certain items that, after you leave and think of something else, let me know, and we can, you know, modify the agenda as, as needed. Next, we will be talking about the regulation regarding student absences, excuses, and dismissals. Anybody have any questions? All right. Next, 1310, Regulation Regarding Homebound Instruction. I believe there's a red line. Anybody? I know you're going to say something.
Ms. Egan? Ms. Egan has a couple of points she wants to make. Go ahead, Ms. Egan.
You can go over and get him.
I'll get you, I'll get you next time.
Real funny, guys, put the new girl next to this one.
We're going to put him on homebound meetings.
Open up since 3:00, also Bruce.
Next, next is 1311, this is regarding revisions to purchasing and procurement. I believe that this item was supported by the Fab Committee for this change, I believe it's the increase. So just, all right. If, after you leave here, you can't wait to have additional comments on these items or have questions, please send them to Ms. E and to the board, and we will deal with them. Last but not least, we have no staff reports, we do have a closed session. So, Mr. Hyrens, can you read us into closed session?
Madam Chair, by motion, pursuant to Section 2.23711A of the Code of Virginia, I move that the Stafford County School Board Committee close meeting to discuss personnel matters pursuant to the personnel exemption at Section 2.23711A, one of the Code of Virginia, 1950 as amended.
Second.
It's been moved and, moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
We are, we are in closed session.